Are you guys ready?
Yeah. Do we click on this? No, we don't, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, normally I don't, but everybody's being quiet anyway. So this is a work session, and work sessions are a little bit different than council. I will definitely tell those who are here who are scouts, thank you for coming. In a normal session, I would ask one of you actually to actually lead the Pledge of Allegiance, but since this is just a work session, we won't be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So come on back to a regular meeting, and we'll do that, because I love to have the scouts do that for me. So thank you for coming tonight. But it's a little bit less formal. We're doing it in here so that everybody can use the PowerPoint and see the proposals, but it's a little bit less formal. And so I will start out by introducing our guests from the YMCA, and I'll let you take it away.
Thank you very much, dear Mayor Clark, Council President Harris, and other city council members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to thank you also for your leadership and commitment to the City of Sherwood and its residents. We appreciate it very much. I want to thank you for the Ballard study and for a well-thought-out and transparent RFP process. So thank you on behalf of the YMCA for that. I believe that the Ballard study and the RFPs themselves give you indispensable information about what is best for the City of Sherwood and its residents. On behalf of the YMCA of Columbia Willamette, we are very excited about the opportunity to begin a new chapter in our service to you, the city council, and to the citizens of Sherwood. I would like to introduce Mark Burris, who is our Chief Operating Officer, and Carolyn Rayback, who is our Chief Financial Officer. They have a presentation for you before we entertain questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Bob, and I would like to second Bob's comments. We've been honored to have been the city's partner for 20 years, and we're looking forward to strengthening this partnership in the years to come. So turning to our presentation, our YMCA has three areas of focus: youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. And together, these three flow into our cause of strengthening the community. We measure our success by the individual and community impact we help to produce. And we've been doing this in the Portland area for almost 150 years now. Our YMCA mission is to put the Christian principles of love, respect, honesty, responsibility, and service into practice through programs that build a healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. And to be clear, we are a social services nonprofit and not a religious organization. Still, we're very proud of our Christian heritage, which is governed by these five principles I just mentioned, and we feel guides us in serving in a most inclusive manner for all. Turning to the operating plan, the city asked us in the RFP to develop an operating plan. And first off, and that is our management plan. We're locally managed. Currently, we have three senior program directors who are managing the day-to-day operations of the facility. We anticipate hiring a Sherwood Y executive director after concluding the RFP and contract renewal process, most likely by year's end. Sherwood Y will continue to be overseen by a local board of managers. The Board of Managers reports to the YMCA Board of Trustees, who governs our association. And we will continue to submit Sherwood Y quarterly financial and operating reports to the city as we have done for years. I mentioned our three senior program directors. These three have 39 years of combined experience at the YMCA. And as a matter of fact, two of those senior program directors live in the Woodhaven neighborhood where our Sherwood YMCA is located. On the marketing side, the Sherwood Y will continue to employ a part-time onsite marketing director, supported by our local YMCA headquarters and YUSA marketing resources. The local marketing director focuses specifically on customizing plans for Sherwood, the Sherwood community. Our marketing plans and promotional concepts will continue to enhance Sherwood's reputation as one of the nation's best places to live. As a side note, the city's feasibility study validated our marketing efforts by saying, compared to most public recreation centers, the current marketing efforts are far superior. On the staffing side, the Sherwood Y will continue to have a strong workplace culture based upon serving and caring for others. We emphasize a diverse and inclusive workplace. Our strong and positive culture, along with training and extensive YMCA career opportunities, helps us to retain our staff. And cross-trained staffing will continue to ensure adequate coverage at all times. Programs are the heart of what we do at the Y, and our people are at the heart of our programs. Nationally, this is what we're most well-known for. Our programs and services are designed to serve the whole person, spirit, mind, and body, and we are unique in that aspect. We continuously look to grow and refine Sherwood's 115 distinct program offerings. We serve the entire spectrum of the community. As a result, we offer some programs which are at a cost to us, yet have a strong community impact. Highlighting a couple of our programs, first our YMCA diabetes prevention. We all recognize this is a nationwide problem, and locally, we are doing our part in addressing this serious health issue. We're looking to expand our current offerings in diabetes prevention here in Sherwood in the coming year. Another popular program is our free Child Watch for all Sherwood YMCA members. We budgeted $212,000 in 2017 to pay for Child Watch, and this free service is typically only found at no cost in the most upscale health and wellness centers. Continuing in programs, our youth development segment offers 43 different classes of our 115 total. By the way, these are all Sherwood members in these pictures. They're all your local friends, neighbors', kids'. There are no stock photos in here, so you may see someone you know. On the aquatic side, we offer 33 of 115 programs. And you may notice Hope Danner on the left side there. She was up on the billboard for about four months, and so she was pretty popular on that billboard and backing for popular demand. On the healthy living side, we offer 39 different classes, and active older adults are part of the healthy living program. Our seniors are a growing part of our Y and are some of our most vocal supporters, so we love our seniors. Our community events are in addition to our 115 distinct programs. These events bring together volunteers, staff, and vendors for community impact. And there's another one of our local kids, and I don't think that's a hot dog she's eating. I'm pretty sure that's a veggie, a very healthy veggie dog. Membership fees. We feel our fees compare very well in the marketplace. A recent Foursquare study recommended that we keep rates as we currently have them at this time. And I'd like to mention, in relation to non-member rates, I'm sorry, non-resident rates, they're roughly 10% higher than resident member rates. And these reduced resident rates are subsidized by these non-member rates, whose higher fees help pay for daily operation of the facility, capital improvements, and maintenance and repairs. Currently, without non-residents as paying members of the facility, operations might be in a deficit, exposing the city and taxpayer to additional costs. Now I'd like to turn it over to Carolyn for our five-year financial forecast.
Thank you. And first off, I'd like to echo what both Mark and Bob shared. It's a pleasure to be here. We're delighted to be sharing this proposal with you, and we're confident that you will see the viability of this proposal as much as we do. In our RFP response, we provided a five-year financial projection for you, and I'm not going to go into all of the details, but that performance model reflected our best estimate of what we believe the future holds for Sherwood. Obviously, we're not in a position to know when the next recession, or the next dip, or Ebb, or all those things happen, but based on what our experience is, this is what we believe is likely to occur in the Sherwood area. A couple of key areas that I want to bring to your attention is, the first is Sherwood Y projects a net surplus in each year. Now, each of those years does have a surplus projected, some of them pretty slim, but we believe that we have the stewardship and the experience to be able to do what is right for both the community and the YMCA. Our project, our projections include continued growth in membership, though probably not as much as it would be otherwise with an expanded facility. Our facility is getting a little bit tight at the moment, and so we have limited our revenue increases. What's unique to us, we believe, is the fact that our projection and our proposal provides that any operating net proceeds remain with the facility, meaning that it remains in the City of Sherwood, while operating deficits, should that occur, will be absorbed by the YMCA. Now, that is a risk on our part that we're willing to take, and we're willing to take that for a couple of reasons. Number one, we really believe that we have experience, not only in this marketplace, but in this space of community centers. But the other one that I think is more important is that we really believe that we want to partner with the City of Sherwood, and we're willing to take that risk because we believe that we're the best answer for you. One of the things that this proposal also includes is continued scholarship for those in need. Sherwood, like every community, has folks that need us, has folks that need scholarship, has folks that need reduced fees. And as you can see by the slide projection, we gave scholarships of about $325,000-plus in 2016, and we're scheduled for that again in 2017. And finally, the YMCA is financially sound, and I'm talking about the Columbia Willamette as well as YUSA. Certainly, our 990s and our financial reports are available publicly so that folks can see those at any time. We believe that our financial soundness and our ability to be sustainable in this space provides you the confidence that you need in order to move forward. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention from the financial part of it is the maintenance side of it. Our proposal includes that the YMCA continue to maintain the facility, except for that building structure, including the external and internal walls, the roof, and electrical and plumbing systems. That is an older facility, and as you can probably expect, some of those systems are going to need to be maintained probably in a more acute manner than what they have in the past. But to that end, the YMCA is also funding, as I think you saw, a specific line item in your proposal for the financial statements of about $50,000 a year to maintain either the facility, equipment, anything that would help kind of shore up that facility that we have available in there. I think the most important thing, though, is to remember that any deficits, should there be outside of that maintenance exception, the YMCA is prepared to absorb. One of the things that is often talked about is the compensation. People often ask, and what is the compensation that we're expecting from the City of Sherwood? And I really want to spend just a couple minutes on this, and that is, in essence, the YMCA is not asking for any fixed management fee from the City of Sherwood. And I want to share, there's a wide range of definitions for compensation. And our proposal does not include charging the City of Sherwood a fee to operate the facility. But I want to quickly address the line item in our financial proposal that refers to management support services. As you, there was an exhibit in the proposal that talked about our support services. And as you can imagine, the facility, any facility is going to require administrative support, such as human resources, payroll, accounting, legal, audit, risk management, oh, boy, I've missed a lot of things, collections, IT, it goes on and on. And that is what this shared management support services is designed for. And it is clearly an allocation of the corporate offices' expenses out to the different branches. The existing contract provides for up to 15% of that to be allocated to the Sherwood. And I think you might notice in our financial proposal that in 2017 and '18, we are probably going to be right around the 13, 13-point-something range. Our proposal for the five years for this contract negotiation is at 11%. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, the YMCA of Columbia Willamette has grown, and so the revenue that we are sharing our ASO expenses over is a wider breadth. But more important than that is the fact that we're willing to take this risk with you. We believe that we are committed to the City of Sherwood, and this is one of the ways we're trying to demonstrate that. I think I'll turn it back over to you unless I've got another gig? Nope? All right.
Well, you gave us an opportunity to really write in what we felt maybe wasn't covered in the RFP in this other section, and we chose to write largely about facility expansion. So the YMCA recommends that the facility be expanded, and this was also recommended by the city's own feasibility study and recommended by our vendor Foursquare Research. We feel that without expansion, future long-term sustainability of this operation could be in jeopardy as cost goes up and revenues become capped. Additionally, the citizens of Sherwood have been vocal in their desire for more space and amenities to handle the city's projected growth. We feel the best way to expand is via a bond campaign. As a data point, a $10 million expansion would roughly cost $9 per average Sherwood homeowner, and I caution, this is a very, very rough calculation. Also want to emphasize is that our proposal is not contingent upon an expansion. We simply offer this as an observation through extensive research in the community. Lastly, we want to emphasize partnership. We look forward to strengthening our partnership in the coming years with the city, and we feel there are many opportunities to do that. So now, we'd like to turn it over to your questions.
All right. Thank you. Counsel?
Whoever would like to go first?
Oh, wow. Let's see here. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for putting together, taking the time to put together a response. I'm a consultant, and I know how much time and effort goes into putting together a thorough response, and so thank you for that. That's the first thing.
Thank you, thank you of those who read the whole thing. We know ours was pretty long.
I'm working on it. It's good, though. Did you have some?
Yes, I do. I'm going to find them.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Yeah, because I have a few, but I don't know how to formulate them.
Okay. All right, Counsel, you?
Yeah, I did have a question. Looking at the five-year projection for revenues and expenses, it looks like from the 2016 to the 2017, the estimated increase in revenues is about 6%, and when I had looked back between the 2014, 15, 16, it had gone up about 4%. How do you guys figure out the jump from 4 to 6 to, how are we estimating slightly more over the next couple of years?
And that's a really good question, and without being facetious, it is an estimate. What we really do is we took the 2017 budget, which really went deep into each line item, each program, and said, what are the things that we're doing better? How are we going about growing our membership? Those kinds of things. And then we took 2018 and really said, okay, what portion of that is going to be continued? And then what portion of that is really going to be sustainable? And so it really is, there's actually about 14, 15 different programs and line items that some are going up 5%, some are going up 8%, some are going flat, those kinds of things, and it's a culmination of all of that.
Okay. And I have a quick question about the membership rates. Do those take into account the legislative session, basically, where hourly wages are going to be escalating? And that includes that? I mean, does that include that escalation of hourly wages and the member rates?
Another great question. And we honored the RFP's request to keep the rates static for the first year, and I think that we recognize that that may not, the membership rates may not be able to maintain that staticness, which is not a good word, but I apologize. That's the only one that came to mind right now. We recognize that we're going to need to do something, and that is kind of what Mark was referring to, that in the future, there are only really two ways to grow revenue, and that is to increase the actual revenue or to increase the rates. And recognizing that the market rate is the market rate, however the market will bear, there might be some elasticity there, but the best way is to try to grow the membership. We do grow the membership to about 3150 in this projection, and right now, we're at 2978.
As if today, we're at 3,008.
Excuse me, I stand corrected.
3,008.
So only about 150 more. So that's fairly conservative.
What we're speaking of, excuse me, just to interject, we're speaking of units of membership, not individual bodies. Units representing households. And that, units don't include, I should add, our senior memberships with Silver Fit and Silver Sneakers, which are another approximately 800.
Oh, okay.
So you can really add that to the 3150, which we feel is at or near capacity. So you add those two together, and you're talking about 4,000 units or households, and then extrapolating from that, that's probably about 11,000 distinct individuals.
So the Silver Fit and the Silver Sneakers program, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are accounted, not accounted for in those units because their memberships are paid for by their insurance that covers their Silver Fit and Silver Sneakers programs?
Correct.
Okay.
And do they pay the full membership, the Silver Sneakers, do they pay the senior rate on the membership?
The Silver Fit and Silver Sneakers is a contract rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so what's the rate of that?
It's a program through insurance. Yeah, it varies, you know, it's, it's very close to the typical, well, I'll say this, it's right around $30, give or take a few. I won't go into the weeds on that. And so if you're not, if you're not in one of those programs, then you can elect to pay the senior rate on your own.
Okay. And those seniors do, that are in that program, the Silver Fit and the Silver Sneakers, through their different organizations, is that tracked by residency? So are they residents, non-residents, doesn't matter?
No, I think we're going to have to get back to you on that one. I don't know if we've made those distinctions because the Silver Fit and Silver Sneakers, those are contracted programs.
And it's particular programs? So these are, these are actually classes that are offered, correct?
Not classes, these are simply different types of memberships.
Okay, so they get full access to the entire facility and all the amenities therein, and within your facility, you have specialty programs that do serve them?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I was surprised to learn, actually, that we've actually been allowing our seniors to bring in their grandkids on those programs and do the free Child Watch, so.
And on that reduced price for the, that the insurance company pays, is that amount that's not paid included in your scholarship amount, that $325,000 that you say you give in scholarships?
Correct. We don't count the Silver Fit and Silver Sneakers in our scholarship, our scholarship totals.
Okay. And do you have a tracking as to how many of your Silver Fit and Silver Sneakers are residents versus non-residents? Do you have a tracking mechanism for that? Could you answer that if you looked? Okay, could you just find out what the?
I wrote that. I'll do that for you, Mayor. So I have a question. How is that 300-plus scholarships funded? How do you get the funding for that? Is that directly through memberships?
So you're saying, how do we get the funding? How do we determine who is chosen?
Not how you determine who, no, but where do you, where do you, you're giving scholarships worth $300,000, is basically what you're saying.
In the past, we've been fortunate in that we haven't had to budget specifically for that. We've been approving, as long as I've been a part here, everyone who applies according to certain guidelines. And so, let's put it this way, it hasn't broken the bank yet.
I think I can offer a little bit more clarification. So to look at that number is really to look at revenue foregone, revenue that isn't collected and charged. So there isn't, outside of what we raise each year in an annual support campaign, there isn't dollars, in that campaign, there are dollars, specific dollars that come in to fund a program, and that's part of this. But the bulk of this has to do with revenue that we don't collect and earn because we allow somebody to come in the facility at 50% of the cost or 50% of the program fee. So it's revenue not collected.
All right. That makes sense. And, go ahead. I was going to say, and of the money that is raised voluntarily, I think you mentioned in the, in the letter, front letter here, where is it? We voluntarily paid 74% of the city's teen center. Is that through your capital campaign? Is that where that 74% comes from?
So, yes, Jennifer's referring to the teen center annex expansion.
Right, yeah. City's teen center bond debt.
Right. So we paid 1.46 million via yearly bond payments, in lieu of the city paying those payments, and then in addition... Right. So we paid 1.46 million via yearly bond payments, in lieu of the city paying those payments. And then in addition to that, we raised 250,000. So that'd be a total of 1.71 million that we voluntarily contributed to the building.
And so...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
On that issue, is the 250 that you raised, would that correspond to occupancy cost on the five-year forecast?
No, that reflects the fundraising that we did in the community.
Okay, so contributions in fundraising.
Right, which was specifically earmarked for that expansion, to lessen the city's burden of debt.
And was that your...I had a follow-up question to that. Okay, so my follow-up question to that is, so you paid 160-some thousand dollars a year for that bond debt payment, and it ended this year, and you still have another year to go. Where is that 167 going to go now?
Well, I could say primarily that went to wages. You know, we...I think we all know that minimum wage is going up. And in addition to minimum wage rising, you see wage compression. So those folks who are supervising folks at minimum wage, there's typically a delta there. And as the minimum wage goes up, the delta typically stays the same. And so it's not only the minimum wage folks are getting wage increases. In addition, we felt wage increases were overdue at our facility, and we were happy to give everyone, if not...I'd say nearly everyone, if not everyone, raises. And I'll add this as well. In November, we purchased about 90,000 or so in new equipment, and we did so partly because of that bond payment being ended.
Okay.
I have another question. I have two questions. One of them, referring to the occupancy costs that Sally had mentioned. And if I'm looking at previous financials, something was called facility costs. Are those the same? Okay, so I'm wondering why we're estimating quite a reduction in those. Oh, is it because of that bond payment? Okay.
You may answer it.
Okay, gotcha. And then I just wanted to go back to what Bob was explaining on the scholarships and revenue foregone for those scholarships. So would it be the same for the Silver Sneakers if they're not paying the exact membership rate? So let's say it's 50 and they're only paying 30, that 20 is revenue foregone. Is that not included in that scholarship fund?
To my understanding, we have not been recording it that way. At the mayor's request, I'm going to look into that, two things. Number one, what is that delta? And number two, what is the difference in the resident and non-resident? So I'm going to try to take care of that for you folks.
Thank you.
So I had another thing, if you could look into, since we're giving you lists.
Here we go, here comes a list.
Okay. So on page three, you list extensive volunteer efforts worth 207K annually. Can you list how you did this?
Sure.
How did you come up with the number of 207,000? And then on the same page, you had a member survey by Foursquare. Could we review your member survey to hear what your members are thinking about and looking for...
Sure, we'd be glad to. We included the executive summary in one of the exhibits, which is just a one-page, but the whole document, we'd be more than happy to share. It's quite large, it's probably about this thick. But we'd be...yeah, we would be happy to share that with you.
Okay.
So we'll send it to Joe.
Okay, thank...great, that'd be great. All right.
And I'll say, though, on the Foursquare study, as Bob said, we're very happy to share that with you. However, that's something we did pay for, and it is proprietary for competitive reasons. So we'd ask that that not be shared with the public.
Okay, okay. So you could...it's all right with you for him to share it with counsel?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so we can do that. Sorry.
Okay, no, I just have a quick question, too. Does the YMCA purchase the equipment or rent, or a combination of both?
Would you believe it's a combination of both? So this last year, in November, we actually purchased equipment. But in many cases, we will lease the equipment because then it's on a three-to-five-to-eight-year lease, and at that point, it's ready to be turned over anyway. And it gives a great way to turn it over and get some new stuff.
And is that turnover rate, is that calculated, I'm assuming based on usage? Bless you. I mean, certainly you have a really high usage right now, so the equipment is going to wear more quickly. So is that a standard three-to-five-year turn for general? Or are you prorating that, or whatever you want to call it?
And in the leases, and this is new for me, I've only been with the Y for about a year, and I'm not from this market space. But my understanding, I was working with the leasing company, and they have so much more knowledge. They know this almost down to a nat's eyelash. And so I really relied on them to help me with that.
Jennifer, I can add that we use consultants at the Sherwood Y to help us with those decisions. They come in periodically, and we go over the near term, medium term, and then long term.
And in the first 18 years, did you ever purchase equipment? Was it always a mix of purchased and leased?
Correct. Currently, I believe we only have two leases out right now.
Okay.
Okay.
So hypothetically, if the Y weren't to remain in the facility, all that equipment would be gone. Because the Y owns it? Because the Y owns it, or leases it.
That's an open discussion in the operating agreement. I think we all agree the operating agreement could have been written better about 20 years ago.
So I have some questions about the operating agreement. How would the YMCA feel about having a lot more visibility in terms of...I'm not sure operations, because I vision an operator being running the program, running the program and maybe some tenant improvements. But as the building owner, the city also has obligations to hire the architect, to design, okay, to do a building expansion, to go out for bonds, if that's in fact what's decided. But what kind of...would the Y be amenable to, in negotiations, to stepping up with the city and working out what could be a much more visible 50-50 partnership in the eyes of the community? Because I personally feel that's something that was missing and something that really needs to be at the forefront in any negotiation.
So let me...I'll try to answer that.
Okay.
We would like to be considered a friend and partner. And so to the extent that we can strengthen our relationship, have good channels of communication and opportunities to get together from time to time so that we can iron out differences and make sure that we don't have things that come up that cause problems in our relationship, we would welcome that. That's something that we would be very amenable to doing. And so I don't know exactly what you mean by 50-50 partnership, but...
Well, visibility in terms of, even for me, I'm a very visual person. If I knew that when I walked up into the building, it is a Sherwood City building as operated by operator A, B, whatever, that would, for me personally, make that mental connection in my community that I am paying for the building as a taxpayer, and I'm also going to a building as a taxpayer that is operated by this operator that I really enjoy. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
There's a tangible connection, or maybe a mental connection that you make. And I think that has, personally, my opinion's been missing. So some way to make that physical manifestation that it is a city-owned building that is partnering with an operator to provide services to the community.
I think that's a great observation. In critiquing what we have had in the past, that's a deficiency because it's not been clear over the years. And so we would welcome the opportunity to create better signage, better messaging around that. I think that's an important message, and it has been missing. I agree.
I just...it kind of goes along those same lines, piggyback onto that. Most of our city-owned facilities that are operated by anyone, we have boards and commissions for those. We do not have a Y boards and commissions. I know you have your board of managers, and there has been, from time to time, one or two counselors, maybe, that have shown up for those meetings. But no official YMCA or Sherwood Rec Center board and commission. Would you guys be open to having that as a citizen board that's added in, very similar to our library board, very similar to our cultural arts board, where the director of your facility is there, along with many members of art community, and then you have a liaison? And they really have a stronger say. And honestly, I imagine it kind of taking the place of your board of managers. So I don't know if you're even willing to consider that or not.
I think, actually, that's a really good idea. And I talked with Joe some time ago about that idea. And I think we were talking about a property committee of some kind that would be an official group or official committee of the city of Sherwood. So yes, we would be amenable to that. I think it's a good idea, in fact.
And do you foresee it working with your board of managers or replacing that group?
Well, I see it...I don't see it replacing it because what we need to do is grow and augment and strengthen our board because they're community partners. But I see it being integral to the future of this partnership and this arrangement. So it can be a key part of how we organize and how we govern the facility.
So maybe it would help me, too, if you kind of outlined what the board of managers does, besides put up signs that say, "Keep our Y."
Well, I can tell you...
They're good at that.
Okay, so I know there's an exhibit in here that talks about branch management regulations and what branch boards are supposed to do.
Yeah.
Not all of them do what they're supposed to do, and some of them, you know, go different directions. But what we want them to do, one of the primary responsibilities is they want...we want them to advocate in the community for the programs and services that the Y provides. We want them to be our ambassadors. Go out and tell the Y story. How can we help this family and this child and this adult? So that's one primary responsibility. Another is to help us raise money so that we can financially assist kids and families that can't afford the fees.
Okay.
And somewhere in the neighborhood, I don't remember exactly, of 100 to 125,000 is in the financial statement in our projections, that we plan on raising that much from the board of managers primarily, is that they are ambassadors, and they're going to go out and help us raise that money. So those are a couple of things they do. They help advise us on programs, the kinds of programs, the quality of programs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so I think the advertise...or advise on the programs, I think, and things like that is what I would imagine to be part of the board, the city boards and commissions, because that's what we generally do. So the...I can't imagine them...well, I guess with the library, we do a little, and the boards and commissions talk about maybe ways to raise money for the friends of the library. But I definitely see where some might overstep others, and but some are different.
Well, we could figure that out. And we could say, okay, here's what the board of managers is going to do, and here's what this property committee, or whatever the proper name is for, here's what they do. And we can make a distinction and put it in writing so it's clear for everybody. And we would be willing to consider that, for sure.
Because on page 15, you show Facilities Committee. What are the two current city representatives for the Facilities Committee?
Clark, I'm going to have to defer to you on that. Who are the names of the individuals?
Off the top of my head...
These are the board of managers committee with two current representatives. Who's that?
Off the top of my head, I can't give you those. Actually, Martin, actually, if you have those names off the top of your head. Martin says he believes it's Darren or Craig. Darren and/or Craig.
Oh, Darren Ziegler.
But we're happy to get those for you right away.
How often does the board of managers' Facilities Committee meet?
I think there's a schedule of meetings, and I can't guarantee that the committee meets every time. We can get you the exact schedule. I can say this, Mayor Clark, that we have had meetings, and while we've invited representatives from the city, and we really want them there, you know, sometimes we haven't been fortunate to have their presence there.
So I have a question for you, because I know that you're a national organization, and so you have a regular outlay of the way that you're structured. So you have your private, you know, your single YMCA in whatever area that you have it, and then you have your local board of managers, and then they have the board of directors, and blah, blah, blah. So we have a little bit of a unique situation because we own the facility and you operate it currently. Do you have any other facilities like that in your national organization? Okay, and how about locally here, in Oregon? Washington? I guess you're Oregon/Washington, aren't you?
We are, yes, yes.
I think the one that I'm thinking of most recently is a partnership up in the Seattle area, and I know that's not Portland, but it's similar. And I think nationally, Mayor, there are, gosh, mostly like 800 different relationships between public agencies and YMCA's that work together. We can certainly, if you would like to get three or four different references in this two-state area that you can chat with, that would be...we could do that.
Sure.
Is that what you'd like?
Yeah, so other cities that have partnered, yeah, that'd be great.
They partner with public agencies.
That'd be great, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, Sally.
So I have a couple of questions. Mr. Burris, I think you mentioned that you were considering expansion. And is...did I miss something in what you were going to expand, or what you were hoping the building would expand to? Did you mention specifically what things you were talking about?
I didn't go into specifics. We outlined some specifics in the proposal. We included a proposal from 2011 that our board of managers and executive director, I believe, discussed with the city. We included architectural plans and listed the square footage expansion in there. We think that's still a rough approximation, but we would propose, if we were seriously looking at expansion as the city's partner, that we would consult an architectural firm and also community needs before going forward.
I can add one thing to that, if that's okay. The Foursquare study that we reference in this report that you have the executive summary for, and that I'm going to send the full report to you, they give very specific things based on their survey of things that need to be expanded. And so when you look at that report, you'll see that they have recommendations as to what spaces and how large they need to be. So I think that will answer your question.
Perfect. And contrasting, this might be Carolyn, in contrasting the supplies and direct operating costs of 255,000 and management support services, am I correct in saying that first, the 328,000 is for...is that three or four facilities where those costs are distributed between those?
So our association costs are distributed and allocated amongst Clark Family Y, the Beaverton Hoop Family Y, the Sherwood Family Y, all of our childcare centers, and the Camp Collins. And then we also have some youth sports in both the West Side and the East Side that those are. So we take all of our expenses and we allocate them. And, you know, since I've been here, we are allocating on a basis of revenue because that seems to be the most consistent approach. We don't have any branches... We don't have any branches that are not revenue-based. If you do have branches that are cost bases versus revenue-based, then you would use a combination of those two, but we are doing it based on revenue.
So, so 11%, I think you said, is the cost allocation to Sherwood?
For the proposed period, the proposed five-year period.
Okay.
Yeah, so 2017 and 18, we have taken down into the 13% range.
Oh, okay. And, and in doing so, would it be fair to say then that we are approximately 10% to 13% of the Y's revenue as well from the Sherwood?
Or about 10%.
Okay. But then we have added costs on top of that for supplies and direct operating costs. So I'm, I'm confused what direct operating costs and supplies are.
Supplies and direct operating costs are those kinds of things such as chemicals, things that are related to the Sherwood facility only. So those are supplies that are being delivered for the programs and services and membership of the Sherwood facility.
And for the whole year, that's 255,000? That seems high to me.
Oh, does it?
It just does.
Yeah, I can, would you like a breakout of what that is?
Sure.
Probably mostly pool stuff. It's probably, yeah, I'd say it's mostly pool things, isn't it?
Pardon?
It's probably mostly pool.
It is a lot of pool stuff. It's linens, it's paper products, you know, toiletries, it's soaps, it's-
Chemicals.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a lot of stuff and I'd be glad to, to list it out in, in detail.
And what is the 172,000 of professional services?
So there's a couple of things that we contract with. For example, the HVAC, the HVAC system, we contract so that they come in and I'm going to turn this over to you. Maintenance agreement.
A pretty good chunk of that is for TCMS. We contract with them, as Carolyn said, for HVAC and the pump and boiler, which are heavily related to the pool.
Okay.
Also included that, and that is in note six in our report on page 26, is cleaning. So the custodial service, which is a contract, that's included in that amount as well.
If I could ask a question, Sally, are you-
I had a quick question about-
I had a follow-up on Clark County. Is yours a follow-up?
Mine's unrelated to that.
Okay, I've got a follow-up on Clark County because you brought that up. So on the 2016 audit on page 19, it says that you had a net deficit of $1,687,999 for the Clark County facility. Can you explain that?
Tell us which report you're looking at.
So it's, it's 2016 audit on page 19.
Mayor, I'm going to be vulnerable right now and tell you that I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but the Clark County Y renovation in 2014 was based on a related party that we set up to take advantage of new market tax credits and this is part and parcel to that. I can provide you with a much better explanation if I have time to put that together, but I'm just going to be honest, I, it's, it's a lot of accounting and tax accounting that is a little bit over my head from time to time.
Okay, if we could just get an explanation because it just doesn't make sense to me that we're 10% of the revenue, but you're losing a million here in 2016. That just doesn't seem to, those numbers don't add.
Right, so it is part of new market tax credits and we had to create a separate entity along with the bank to fund new market tax credits. So we'll have to get back to you on that. This, this is an exhibit and it's a separate entity and it's not part of this audited financial statement except by reference. So if you look at the first part of this on page, page four, page three, you will see the operations, including the net from the, what's called a qualic B on that exhibit. On pages three and four is where you have the consolidated statement of operations for the entire YMCA of Columbia-Lamont.
Is that behind one of the tabs?
Yeah, tab 10.
It's in tab 10.
Thank you, okay, got it.
And I'm looking at page three and four where it has statement of activities, statement of functional expenses and on page, on page two, it has the balance sheet. So new market tax credits, for those of you who have ever done them, they're quite complex and it will probably, we'd be more than happy to bring a tax accountant to explain it in detail, but that's why we created that and that's why the footnote, because it lasts for seven years.
And then it tumbles back.
Then it comes back into the association and again, it's part of the total.
Okay, and then on page 22, there's a reference to the city receiving excess revenues. Has, has this ever been triggered or tracked in the course of the current agreement? Have we received excess revenues?
We have actually tracked it and the excess, there are no excess revenues at this point because we have, we have expended more funds in capital expenditures than the surplus has provided and we can certainly provide that for you from, on-
For the Sherwood facility?
For the Sherwood facility.
Okay, so if you could provide us with those numbers, that'd be great.
And we'd be happy to. Just one last note is since the very beginning, even though there was this provision that we could share the revenues, this portion goes to the city, this portion of the Y, early on in our working relationship with the city of Sherwood, both sides decided to forego that and put all of the money, if there was a net of revenue over expense, to put all of that money back in the facility and not take it on behalf of the city, excuse me, Carolyn, and not take it on behalf of the Y. And we have, we memorialize that or we, we talked with Joe a few years ago about it and we have an agreement where we just continue that practice through the remainder of the term because it was better for the facility, all these funds would go back into the Sherwood YMCA and not go elsewhere.
Okay, and could you list how those funds went back?
Be glad to.
Okay. Okay, so you're going to, not now, you're going to do it, okay, you're going to provide us with that. Okay, all right, super. Okay, and you talk about in that audit, that 2016 audit on that same page, it refers to a management fee and then in your presentation, you said there isn't a management fee. I'm a little confused.
I think that's why I tried to start the part, that part of the conversation is there's so many different definitions of management fee. What I think our auditor refers to is the management support services allocation as that management fee.
So you're calling it shared services instead of management fee, but it's a management fee?
It's the same, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing, I know.
Shared services?
Yeah.
So I have a question kind of along the lines of what you were asking. You've mentioned that if there are profits going forward and the YMCA has chosen to stay there and there's profits, that they will stay in the city of Sherwood. Can you explain that? I'm guessing you don't mean write the city a check.
No, what we're saying is, what we're proposing is that-
You know, don't take it off the table.
We're proposing that if we, if we earn, for instance, if we have a surplus of 25,000 in a given year, that all goes back into a reserve account for this facility's operation for capital improvements, property, plant and equipment.
So along those lines, you've got programming, which, you know, the YMCA has chosen to stay, that's, that's what the YMCA does, is the programming, so there'd be a certain amount for that. But then the other part of that, depending on what the agreement is, that would be responsibility of the city to take care of those, whatever improvements or working in partnership to address where those funds would get used.
Yes.
Would you be amenable to that?
Yes.
Counselor Garland. I'm sorry.
No, this is a good string of questions. My question's unrelated to that, so this is a good segue.
Well, I was trying to keep on then.
Love it.
So executive director, you had mentioned that you don't currently have an executive director and I believe you said you're looking to hire one in November, I believe you had said. Couple of questions on that. Is that a conscious decision to wait until after these negotiations are done to hire that executive director or is it just that the process is taking a little while to do so? And in the hiring process for that executive director, were we to extend the contract with you, would the city have any input or say in candidates hiring?
We've actually talked about that as a team and we all agree that, you know, we would welcome the city's input when, in the interviewing process. And Sean, to answer the first part of your question, we did make a conscious decision to wait until after the contract decision was finalized.
Is there a reason for that?
Well, absolutely, you know, when you, when you look at the timing, you know, I think we're very close to posting for that position and to us, it wouldn't have made sense to hire someone if we weren't going to be here for more than a year and a half or so.
It would be very difficult to find a YMCA professional to move in from some other part of the country for a job that would end in a year or year and a half.
So maybe to follow up on that, in general, when it comes to these senior management type of positions, do you generally look within to promote? Do you look outside of the area? Is there a general answer?
We always look within first to promote and if there's somebody within the branch or within the association that's ready, then we would encourage them to apply, but we're always going to look for the best qualified candidate and that would involve a national search and we would love to have the city participate in that selection process.
So your first, our first contract with you guys was for 20 years and I see that you guys are proposing a five-year. Is there any reason for the shortness of?
One of the comments that Mark made earlier that I think informed our decision to keep it to five years is that this is an older facility, it's 20 years old, it's, it needs some work and it needs to be able to handle the ever-increasing costs and there's this pressure on, on the revenue side. At some point, this facility is, if, if it isn't expanded and some of that isn't addressed, it very well could be in the position of needing subsidy. And to be self-sustaining, you've got to reinvest. Sometimes, like we did at our Clark Y, we, we put another $8 million into it for this very reason, is that the potential of the Y was capped, we were losing money there, we needed to reinvest and now the, the trend line and the trajectory is good. We're recapturing a lot of what we had lost, but we had to reinvest in the facility. And so we thought it prudent just to limit it to five years because if there isn't a way to improve the facility, to be able to serve more people, to do it efficiently, to keep the building up, we may be in a situation where we can't offer you to cover all the deficits and to pay for everything because the earning potential of the facility has decreased to the extent that now it requires a subsidy from someone other than the Y. That's why we limited it to five years.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Mayor?
Counselor Robinson?
What approach would you want to take in renegotiating an operating agreement if you are selected by the city to do so and what timeline would you expect that to take? It's no secret that our past negotiations have not been successful, obviously, that's why we're here. But I'm looking forward and I'm hoping that we improve upon the past and I'm curious how you see this happening and what happens when, what's your, what's your hope?
Well, my hope is that the three of us can sit down with Joe and whoever from city council and we hammer this out in a matter of a week or two weeks or three weeks, whatever it takes, and we get it done.
Yeah, I would add, you know, we would want to focus on the business aspect and, you know, exhaustively and not get any attorneys involved until we've got all the business done and they're just-
No offense, Joe.
You're out, John.
We need attorneys.
But we, well, attorneys would review the contract, but I think we could sit down and negotiate something that works for you, that works for us.
There are business points and then there are legal points, but we would focus on the business points exhaustively before turning it over to attorneys.
And most of our business points are in this RFP and we stand by it and this is what would go in the agreement is that we're going to cover all the deficits, we're going to limit the overhead, the management fees to 11% of adjusted gross revenue, we're going to put 250,000 in this maintenance reserve fund, all of those would be part of the agreement.
But I think one of the things, Sally, that you refer to and to the rest of the council, we have to work at the relationship first and we're going to have to build bridges, whether or not they've been broken in the past or, or leveled. At this point, let's just start over and start new and I think the three of us are committed to doing that and I think if we learn to trust one another, we're going to have a lot better discussions when the lawyers get there.
Well, as a follow-up to that though, I, part of the, part of what I perceive the problem was, is that you all would have something that you would want in the contract and you'd have to take that before your board of managers, maybe even the board of trustees, I'm not sure, before you could present it to the city and then the city would respond to that by first having a special meeting with council before it could take it back to Joe to get back to you and so-
And so one of the things that I think would be very helpful is to get first and foremost from the board of trustees and the board of managers, some latitude.
Okay.
That we have latitude to negotiate in these parameters so then we can have those frank conversations with you folks and knowing that we have this latitude. And if, if it's something we don't have, then we'll certainly let you know.
And I apologize for that confusion, but this document has already been approved by the board of trustees and the board of managers. So all the deal points in here are already confirmed. All we have to do is iron out language. I don't really need to take it anyplace else because we already have the approvals. So that's not going to be a problem.
That sort of is, one of my questions is who actually is the decision maker? Is it you guys or does?
It's, it's the board of trustees. They'll, they'll be looking to management for a recommendation, but again, I've already taken this to the executive committee of the board of trustees and they have already approved all of these deal points.
As long as we don't change anything in there, we're golden.
As long, all we have to do is have the right kind of language, right? And we can work on that and property committee or whatever it happens to be, whatever name that is, I just don't see that as being a problem and we have already taken care of what became a, an obstacle in the past. So they have already seen this, both the board of managers and the board of trustees.
And in your overall financials, you have a, it shows that the board of trustees, there's two Sherwood area residents, Tracy Butterfield and Keith Mays. Are we missing anyone else in that?
Tracy's no longer on our board, yeah, she's no longer on our board of trustees.
Okay.
But Keith Mays is still on our board of trustees.
And any other Sherwood residents?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Definitely nobody else from the board of managers.
Our CFO is from Sherwood.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I was, I was also wanting to, it came across my notes, I'm flipping through the book here, on a yearly basis, we conduct a staff satisfaction survey.
Yes.
I'm curious to know, can you provide some of those staff satisfaction surveys for our review?
Or the summary of them?
The summary of them?
Be glad to.
Okay.
You're talking about for the Sherwood YMCA specifically?
Right.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
We just finished one.
And then did you do a member one as well?
Yeah, we do member ones.
I am aware that we have done member surveys and I'm aware that there is some information that is a compilation of those. I have yet to find it, so I will look for it.
If we could see like a couple- If we could see like a couple of years of the staff survey, you know, a couple of years back, that'd be great.
But we'll give you the last two years.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I can tell you that the Foursquare research study that you're going to get a complete copy of, they cited the net promoter score that we received from members, which was an 87, I believe, or 86, which they said is an excellent score. So that's a member satisfaction survey done by an outside independent group to measure well, how satisfied are Sherwood members? Because part of that telephone survey that they did, I think they called 600 units plus 200 current members. All that will be in the report, and you can judge for yourself whether that's adequate. But we do have that information.
Okay, great.
Yes, staff question.
You mentioned that with your staff, that there are a lot of career opportunities for them within the YMCA as a whole. And so it's part of the incentive of working there. Do you have any examples of people who have started here in our Sherwood Y and have expanded outside of the current facility?
So I have one particular individual that works for me, and I just started carpooling with her about three weeks ago. And I found out that she started out at the Y. And she started out in the Welcome Center. And it was really interesting to hear, and really as opportunities became available in different areas of the Y, we post those opportunities. And she is now at the ASO office working in the accounting and finance department.
So I have a question about the management support services, because you talked a little bit about that dropping. So you said the percentage you anticipated between 13% between '17 and '18. How do you come up to that conclusion? So how do you come up with that number? Is that a percentage of the adjusted gross revenue? And if that adjusted gross revenue goes up, why do your expenses go up? So as you increase your volume of money coming in, in membership, why does the management service have to go up?
So there's a lot of reasons why your management... These costs at ASO fluctuate. And some of them fluctuate with revenue. For example, billing and collections will fluctuate as membership changes. Risk management will fluctuate as you have more members tracking through. There are some things that stay fixed. One of the things that is really considered a variable fixed that we're dealing with this year is our IT solution. So we have been using a membership software organization called Class, and it is sunsetting this year. And so we are now investing in a new software system that is going to provide a lot of bells and whistles, but yet it's obviously going to be more expensive. And new software as a service systems are based on revenue rather than fixed rates. So what we're finding, though, many salaries, for example, will be fixed and only slightly variable based on cost of living and transactions, we are finding quite a few more expenses that are being tied, especially service costs that are being tied to revenue. So it's not, Mayor, it's not a one-for-one ratio, but it is somewhat reflective of revenue. And as I did an analysis that kind of went through all the different cost drivers, the difference between going through the very, very long spreadsheets that went through and said, okay, here's all the different cost drivers of number of employees, number of members, number of incidents. And I compared that cost to a percentage of revenue. It was so minor that I chose the percentage of revenue as a way that people can understand it a lot easier.
Does that answer your question?
Well, not really. Because I don't see how increased revenue can cause an increased burden on billing. You have a computer system that does billing. You put in another name, boom, billing done.
Well, not actually billing done because you have monthly, you have credit cards, you have collections, you have statements. It's not... I guess what I'm trying to indicate, that it's not necessarily a one-for-one ratio. There's staffing changes that occur. There's a lot of different things. And we could have provided a fixed cost to that, but I don't know that that would be completely reflective of all of the cost drivers that happen either. So it's really kind of a combination of both. And when I did research, I found that many organizations in previous lives, as well as the YMCA's, do allocate based on a percentage of revenue, or if it's a cost center, based on the percentage of costs. So that's the method I chose.
So if we want to give increases in my office for the support services that we provide branches, we have to get that from the branches. And as their revenue grows, then we get a piece of that so that we can in turn give increases to salary, increases to staff who work in support services. So that's one reason why it's tied, although it's not one-for-one. The other is the new software system, just to punctuate that a little bit, the annual fee, correct me if I'm wrong, the annual license fee for this new system called Daxco that we're going on is based on revenue. It's a percentage of revenue. And as the association's revenue grows, our annual fee to them grows at the same rate. And so does, for instance, the... And I think this is part of what we... Our proposal, maybe it's not a separate line item, but we pay as part of the movement, we pay approximately 1% of revenue to the Y of the USA. Well, as revenue grows at Sherwood, well, 1% of that has to go to pay Y of the USA. So there's some costs like that, but it's not one-for-one. I agree.
But it's always a percentage, the same percentage.
It's always a percentage.
So I'm a consultant. When I send a bill to my clients, there's always a 6% overhead fee. And if I'm billing 300, then 6% of 300 is whatever. Or 6% of 3,000. Is that similar, something like that? Okay.
And so what do we get for that 1% revenue that you send to the Y of the USA?
We get marketing support. We get training and development. It connects us to a worldwide movement. And in terms of staff development and growth, you know, maybe somebody in Sherwood or at another branch decides to take a job in some other part of the world or the country. So recently, the... Excuse me, one last thing. Y of the USA has just come in, and they are leading the association through a strategic planning effort. And that's at no additional cost to us.
Okay.
That's part of the services that they provide to the YMCA of Columbia-Lamont.
Including branding, I'm assuming.
Oh, yeah. The logo, branding.
So that leads me to my final question that I have. And Mark, you mentioned that the YMCA is a social services nonprofit organization rather than a religious-based organization. So that being said, how much autonomy does the Sherwood, you know, if the family YMCA have to stick with the brand? And what the national movement might want you to do? The direction I'm coming at it is you've got Christian values, which also happen to be human values and Muslim values and many other values of folks. How can you, as a YMCA organization, make it all-inclusive and have that autonomy from the national organization to make it all-inclusive by how you brand things that you have in the building itself? Is there some autonomy that you have to make decisions on what you're putting in the building?
It's an excellent question. We have a great deal of autonomy because we're all separate 501(c)(3)'s. And the national Y doesn't have a representative on our board of directors. Each YMCA, which is a corporation, is separately controlled and is very distinct. So we have a great deal of autonomy. What we don't have autonomy for are some of the brand standards, like we have a specific way in which we have to use the logo, for instance. So we have no...
Colors?
Colors, all of that, that's controlled by the national Y. And it's part of what I agree to as the CEO each year, is to abide by their membership standards. So as for what goes in the YMCA building, because I heard you say that, that's totally up to us.
You have some autonomy there.
Yeah, we have total autonomy. The Y of the USA doesn't say, well, I don't like that color on that wall, and I want you to change it. They don't do that. They tell us, here is the palette of colors that we recommend that are brand compliant. But they don't tell us what we put up on the walls, how we paint things, what kind of equipment we utilize. That's totally discretionary.
So in your presentation, you brought up you support, it's not... You were not basing that we must do it, but you support an additional bond for expansion of the facility. So have you had discussions with the school district about expanding the pool?
We have not, but we would welcome them in addition to city staff and getting together and figuring out a path forward.
If I can just kind of follow up on that. So the expansion plans that are in the proposal, looks like some very considerable just real estate of making the building bigger. Can I safely assume that that would then result in more employees, higher maintenance fees, higher... Any numbers around that yet, or too early to say?
We don't have any current numbers around that, but that's something that we would provide, assuming we got a positive nod from you. We're not going to be presumptuous and go out and create something unless that's something of interest to you. But if it is, we'll create some numbers, we'll look at them. It means more revenue, more expense, more people served, more Sherwood citizens served, greater number of programs, and a facility that would be a state-of-the-art facility.
Do you have any other questions?
I have one last one. On page 22, you guys mentioned creating a community services planning group with our city's community services department. Know what you would like to achieve from that, or what was the...
Well, I think we were thinking along the lines of what Council President Harris was talking about. That was our attempt at strengthening the partnership.
Okay. All right. Thank you for coming. And if you could provide city staff with... Joe, with the information, the additional information that we asked you that you didn't necessarily have read at your fingertips, that would be fantastic. Thanks for coming.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate being able to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back with our next presentation. Thank you. Break the bell. I hope that I explained it well. You know, and I hope that I explained it well. You know, that it's like this is...
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
It's a work session.
Right, right, right.
My mic's numbing, it's blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
Have you realized that our mics are on and you can hear me talking?
I was laughing at the...
Hello. Good to see you again, Krista.
Nice to meet you.
You get a drive. Does it lock you in? It's probably going to be better.
You hook up your computer.
Yeah, I'll turn mine on just so I can...
Just in case, or just so you...
Well, the print's so small on this, I can't read it.
Ah. Okay.
My copy, not yours.
So if I put it here, you can do...
Yeah.
You know how to work it from here, right? You're probably much better at this.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't meet Chip last time?
Yeah, I did meet you.
Chip's a new guy. I have James.
Yeah. Yeah.
Should I set my James? No.
I don't care.
No, just for quick bounce stuff. No, this is fine. I think this is good right now. Yeah. You know, my voice can carry.
Where's your other bag at?
That's right here. I just set it by your feet. You didn't see that? It's right there. I bet you saw it. I had it to you.
Pass these out when we do pass them out.
I think it ends up really just kind of weird.
For them. The presentations, these are the support.
You thought you were going to get it.
Yes.
Oh. It works. Testing, testing.
How'd you turn it on?
It's numbered out, it's called.
Yeah. I told you the day he retired, he told me.
I remember telling you, you remember.
I don't know who said it, man. No, I said it.
I don't know. No, definitely.
I'm sitting here, not paying attention. I'm not that fast of a driver.
What's that?
Oh. Oh, really.
If I tell it like that, it'll be good.
You can push it.[1494.63] I think it ends up really just kind of weird.
For the presentation, these are the support materials.
You thought you were going to get two of these?
Yes.
Oh. It works. Testing, testing.
How'd you turn it on?
I hit switch.
Numbering off its call. Yeah. I told you the day he retired, he told me.
I remember telling you, you remember.
I barely.
I don't know who said it, man.
No, I said it.
Oh, my gosh. A little bit of this, a little bit of that. Mix it up.
Mm-hmm. Oh, no. No, definitely. I'm sitting here, not paying attention. I'm not that fast of a diary person.
What's that? Oh.
Oh, really?
If I told it like that, it'll be good.
He can push.
Okay. Thank you.
In your handouts, you've got the three clients up here on this slide that are listed in your packet. You've got the Wellness Center in Beaumont, Westwood, Wisconsin, and Bethel, Alaska. We've also got a recreational site in MIT over in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So, we're a national company. We're basically from one end of the country to the other, north and south. It really doesn't matter the location of where we're going to be. We'll make that transition easy, the transition easy, and we work really hard to do that. And it also reflects the fact that we've got a customer satisfaction of 98% with our clients and our members. And if you look, it's really almost just like Sherwood. If you look at the Wilton P. Hebert Health and Wellness Center in Beaumont, we have 137, 136 headcount there, and we've had that client and that contract for 21 years. And they keep renewing with us because they love what we're doing with that center. Next slide, please. So, basically, again, this is just another slide showing that we are very comparable with these centers, whether we're having pro shops, spas, locker rooms, equipment, group X, aquatics classes or aquatics equipment, outdoor courts, sport courts. And we do all that through programming, through membership, through community relations. And so, we take that and we value it, and we really work hard to make sure that that happens.
So, you can see the next slide, surprised it's got more data, more numbers on it. I'm the data guy. I always like to, you know, we're going to be consultative with you as well, but I'd like to think a good percentage of our approach is going to be more on analyzing data and coming at you with comparisons. I think when you look at our company, we probably have one of the largest normative databases of information on several hundred locations. We track that daily. So, when we're working with our clients moving forward, and we need a new one of these, or should we expand out into this open grass area and make the aquatics area bigger, we're able to pull from a very large database of information. So, and again, my disclaimer on the numbers to the right is, I pulled those numbers from your study that you did that was out there publicly and compared it with ours. So, it's very simple there. I don't have to explain it, but I took it from facility size. And when you see the health fitness-like client, I took all of our clients that are similar, similar physical space, components, got aquatics, gymnasiums, rock climbing walls, community-based, in comparison, obviously, to what your scope and the nature of your program is. So, if you can see, our average facility size, and all the way down there, is very similar in scope to yours. So, very close in facility size, hours of operation, very close there as well. The staff headcount is in a very reasonable range there, too. The weekly program volume, membership total, there's a little variance there. And then the recovery rate. So, I took all of our programs similar to yours and looked at the recovery rate. And then I took the recovery rate from your study because it was done, I think, from 16 to 17, and I just added 5% as a projection, assuming that you're growing. And that's where you get the 2915 on your membership. So, this is simply to tell you that we really have a good understanding, and we have a good client base that's very similar in parallel, similar populations, community-based, and probably a lot of the same struggles and challenges as well. So, we're aware of that moving forward.
I think the other thing this points out, too, is the amount of data and reporting that we provide back to our clients. Obviously, we're tracking all of this stuff. So, on a regular basis, we're coming back to you and saying, you know, "Here's these numbers, and here's what they mean, and here's what we recommend based on what we're seeing." So, I think that just kind of points to some of those features.
I'll be the guy that gives you some experience and some of our approaches and based on other sites that we manage. And I'll try, since I get to go last, I'll try not to be repetitive. But our philosophy, we don't have one health fitness way of doing things. I think Tony said it, Chip said it, Arch is even saying it. So, we try to get to know our clients, and we try to acclimate ourselves in the way that we think will work for you, in this case, at Sherwood. What works for me at the site I manage at MIT in Cambridge, Mass., dealing with students, stress levels, things, their sleep, is very different from what I do in Bethel, Alaska, where drowning is an issue, and they offer an aquatic center, and it's a lot of safety. So, we get to know Bethel, we get to know MIT, and we say, "Okay, let's learn about your culture," and then take the resources that we have from the number of centers that we have and the experience we have, and we plug in what's going to work for you. So...
In a little bit here, we put several of them in the proposal as references for you as well. And then, as we also looked at your opportunity, obviously, should you choose a new management partner, it is a transition project. And when you look at our business since 15, we've had a lot of transition business over the last several years. And four of our major transitions actually were projects that were very scary, but very similar in scope to your situation. Very similar sized centers, very similar sized populations, staffing, and we transitioned those, and some of them will be in our storytelling today. And then, you know, the bottom line that we always pride ourselves on, we survey really our membership and our clients almost daily, but we do annual formal surveys every year. And we're proud that we consistently get a 98% satisfaction rating across our members and our client partners. So when you look at, as we look at our partnership objective, you can see that cluster there. And we spent some time out on your websites, and right on one of your landing pages, right on the cover, is the city of Sherwood's mission and their values. And we always, our approach is that we don't want to come in, we want to share with you our values, and hopefully they're in parallel with yours. But we really want to make sure you understand that as you move this program forward, we're here to be your partner and to help you take that program to a higher level in the future, to where you want it to go. But we're going to adopt your values, your mission, and that's what we're going to live every day in combination with ours. So when you see this cluster here, you can see, some of them should be very familiar. The four main pillars there in the big colors, the quality service, the citizen partnership, fiscal responsibility, and community pride. You can see some of the sub-bullets there, the livability, the FitRecWell and your programming, having an active rec center advisory board. These are some of the things as we pulled from your values. Again, we're still standing on the outside looking in, but we wanted to illustrate that really our commitment as your partner would be to really grab a hold of your mission and your values and help you succeed in those as you move forward. The next slide here, the Why Health Fitness, again, looking at four pillars. If you start at the bottom left and kind of go clockwise, as I spoke a minute ago, over 60% of our new business over the last several years has been transition projects. And many of them have been very similar in scope to your project. I spoke about our customer service and member engagement. We pride ourselves, we pay very close attention to member service and making sure your population is happy and pleased with programming that's going on, making sure there's diversity, there's parity amongst the offerings for everyone that comes in the door. We do that through our people and our programs. As you heard some of us state, you know, before I joined Health Fitness, I was a consultant in the industry for about four or five years. And when I decided to go back into the management side of it, it was one of my first choices. I've seen, and it's a rarity in our fitness business, to be honest with you, where you see someone having a tenure 15, 20, 25 years with the same organization. Because some of my moves personally, they weren't for professional reasons. When I moved from Minneapolis to San Francisco, or San Francisco down to Dallas, some of them were personal, getting married, things like that. And our organization, because of our size, were able to really take the young professionals and offer them a career path. So you'll see a lot of our tenure, it's very respectable within our industry. So that's something to speak of. And last but not least, obviously, cost-effective delivery. We're always looking at budget adherence, fiscal responsibility. Can we help you as a partner source things to get better cost for some of the variable things like that? So we're very focused on that. So these are four key pillars that we like to bring into most of our partnerships.
Okay. In your handouts, you've got the three clients up here on this slide that are listed in your packet. You've got the Wellness Center in Beaumont, Westwood in Wisconsin, and Bethel, Alaska. We've also got a recreational site in MIT over in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So we're a national company. We're basically from one end of the country to the other, north and south. We, it really doesn't matter the location of where we're going to be, we'll make that transaction easy, the transition easy, and we work really hard to do that. And it also reflects the fact that we've got a, you know, customer satisfaction of 98% with our clients and our members. And if you look, that's really, almost just like Sherwood, if you look at the Wilton P. Hebert Health and Wellness Center in Beaumont, we have 137, 136 headcount there, and we've had that client and that contract for 21 years. And they keep renewing with us because they love what we're doing with that center. Next slide, please. Basically, again, this is just another slide showing that we are very comparable with these centers, whether we're having pro shops, spas, locker rooms, equipment, group X, aquatics classes or aquatics equipment, outdoor courts, sport courts. And we do all that through programming, through membership, through community relations. And so we take that and we value it, and we really work hard to make sure that that happens.
So you can see the next slide, surprise, it's got more data, more numbers on it, on the data guide. I always like to, you know, we're going to be consultative with you as well, but I'd like to think a good percentage of our approach is going to be more on analyzing data and coming at you with comparisons. I think when you look at our company, we probably have one of the largest normative databases of information on several hundred locations. We track that daily. So when we're working with our clients moving forward, and we need a new one of these, or should we expand out into this open grass area and make the aquatics area bigger, we're able to pull from a very large database of information. So, and again, my disclaimer on the numbers to the right is, I pulled those numbers from your study that you did that was out there publicly and compared it with ours. So it's very simple there, I don't have to explain it, but I took it from facility size. And when you see the Health Fitness-like client, I took all of our clients that are similar, similar physical space, components, got aquatics, gymnasiums, rock climbing walls, community-based, in comparison, obviously, to what your scope and the nature of your program is. So if you can see, our average facility size, and all the way down there, is very similar in scope to yours. So very close in facility size, hours of operation, very close there as well. The staff headcount is in a very reasonable range there, too. The weekly program volume, membership total, there's a little variance there. And then the recovery rate, so I took all of our programs similar to yours and looked at the recovery rate. And then I took the recovery rate from your study because it was done, I think, from 16 to 17, and I just added 5% as a projection, assuming that you're growing. And that's where you get the 2915 on your membership. So this is simply to tell you that we really have a good understanding, and we have a good client base that's very similar in parallel, similar populations, community-based, and probably a lot of the same struggles and challenges as well. So we're aware of that moving forward.
I think the other thing this points out, too, is the amount of data and reporting that we provide back to our clients. Obviously, we're tracking all of this stuff. So on a regular basis, we're coming back to you and saying, you know, here's these numbers, and here's what they mean, and here's what we recommend based on what we're seeing. So I think that just kind of points to some of those features.
I'll be the guy who gives you some experience and some of our approaches and based on other sites that we manage. And I'll try, since I get to go last, I'll try not to be repetitive. But our philosophy, we don't have one Health Fitness way of doing things. I think Tony said it, Chip said it, Arch is even saying it. So we try to get to know our clients, and we try to acclimate ourselves in the way that we think will work for you, in this case, at Sherwood. What works for me at the site I manage at MIT in Cambridge, Mass., dealing with students, stress levels, things, their sleep, is very different from what I do in Bethel, Alaska, where it's drowning is an issue, and they offer an aquatic center, and it's a lot of safety. So we get to know Bethel, we get to know MIT, and we say, okay, let's learn about your culture, and then take the resources that we have from the number of centers that we have and the experience we have, and we plug in what's going to work for you. So with that, we try to really take a targeted approach to your programming and to your customers, to your residents, to your members, however you want to use that. We do that year over year with an annual plan. We measure everything we do, like Arch said, with data. I do it also on the account management side. If we run a program, a Learn to Swim program, we want to know how many people are in it, how much did it cost, what's the cost per participant, how to do versus last year, should we do it next year? Everything's evaluated, and everything has to be, it has to make sense on why we're doing it. We ask ourselves questions all the time, and we hope that you want to hear from us, and we'll report back to you on how we're doing and be active in that solution. I think that's the way it works best, if you're working with us and we're working with the community, and therefore, we can give a diverse amount of programming to everyone with that. So I know we're probably, we don't have the largest brand, so, you know, who's Health Fitness? We're kind of, we're transparent. Tony said that, Arch said it, and Chip said it. You know, you're not going to, we're not going to come in with a flag. I don't think we have signage on any building of any of our centers. There's no Health Fitness sign. We're kind of that quiet partner that works with you, and we do that with our members and with our clients.
You know, one thing I would add to that, when you look at our industry, there are in numbers out there, but as I look at a lot of the studies, not everyone will publicly report their participation data. But if you look at a swatch across the industry, I'd say, you see them as low as three times a month as far as visits. I'd say five is probably the average that I see out there in reports within the industry. Our active participation rate, we call it our APR, per month, right now, we're at 6.9. So we're averaging almost seven visits a month across our membership. Our short-term goal as a company across all of our clients is to have a national average of eight visits a month, which means we're averaging people coming in and taking part in programs at least twice a week. Our long-term goal over the next three to five years now is to get our national APR up to 12 visits a month. That means we're averaging three times a week where people are coming in and taking part in programming. So member engagement, member satisfaction, member service, it's very important to us, and we play, we pay very close attention to that.
Our marketing communications takes a similar philosophy, in that it would be integrated into what works at an individual center. And we have a pretty robust marketing group and marketing, our corporate support with our marketing. So our materials, whether they be paper, print, email, web-based, we have different themes, different modes, different challenges, if you will, that would match what would work for Sherwood. So if we're doing one in one of our corporate Harley-Davidson plants, they may have hard hats, obviously, and coveralls, versus, again, if we're doing it at MIT, it would be student-based or whatever would work in your community. Our marketing department also has an on-demand section that our managers or our staff can use. So if they want to run a certain program, there are all kinds of materials, ideas, themes that they could go to, to utilize that. And I think it's a pretty powerful tool. And within the staffing, I assume we'll get more in-depth on our pricing and staffing, but you would have a marketing manager on site, but that person would be supported by our corporate team as well, and have all the resources that Health Fitness offers. So it's 40-some years of experience on how to market in fitness, and it's very targeted, but could also be very customized to your group.
So all of our programs, that marketing-on-demand resource library, every program we develop, it's vetted, science and everything, but then it's, a marketing material package is created for that. So the manager at your site would have a library. A lot of times, our liaison sometimes sits over the marketing manager's shoulder and says, oh, I like that, I like that. You can pick a campaign, you can mix campaigns, but every program, our Mind Your Health, our What's What Meetup, our multi-session group class programming, it all comes with marketing. Like James said, the behind-the-scenes, it's basically a blank template where we can drag in logos, we can drag in detail in the windows, and you can have a lot of fresh-looking marketing materials throughout the year, really, really fast. It's not in the olden days where we used PageMaker and things like that on ourselves to create stuff. They'll have a really big library of resources, and access to that library comes within our management fee, so there's no additional cost for all of those program resources.
Within James's region, we also run quarterly marketing calls, so those individuals gather and they bounce ideas off each other. And so what might be working in one center in Texas or in Massachusetts may transition and work here, or the ideas that we might take from Sherwood. And we take that and we put them in other centers, and we find huge amounts of success that way, because they're constantly communicating and they're constantly getting ideas from each other. So it's just another avenue. We take our staff, and we're able to teach them, and they can teach each other.
Thanks for that staff transition there, Chip. That was nice, I wasn't expecting that. This is, the staff transition's a big piece, and as Arch mentioned, we've done a large number in the past five years. I think 60% of our business is probably staff transition, where it's a current center being managed. I'm actually running two right now, one with Harvard University and one with an aquatic center in West Hartford. So very different. Again, our approach is, we listen. So at Harvard, for instance, they wanted to keep all the staff they had and transition them in. So we would interview, pre-qualify, make sure everyone could meet the standards that Health Fitness and our contract with our client, with Harvard in this case, has. And then we can go through a transition approach and have their staff, which, that's about 45 FTE that we're going to transition on July 1st, so.
That accounts for about 136 headcount. So the full-time equivalency is what their 40-hour-a-week rate is, but it's literally 100 and some, so it's very similar.
So the Cornerstone Aquatic Center in Hartford is a different approach, where they did, they were not having all the staff be retained over, and we would interview, the current staff could interview for the position, or we'd interview from the outside and then make decisions that way. So I don't know how it would work here, but that's something if we were chosen to work with you, we would start talking about right away, on how we could handle that. And if there's, if there's no opinion, then we would open jobs like anybody would in any center, and anyone could apply, and we would go that route as well. So different ways we take it, based on who we're working with, what the climate is with the staff. But like I said, it's something that we do quite a bit. Our HR department and I are very close. I've done, like I said, I like to, we talked about the Bethel, Alaska, I love to talk about that project. It was one of the most unique and favorite projects that I did. It was just over a year ago. And I tell people, if we can transition the staff in Bethel, Alaska, which, if you're not familiar with Bethel, it's on the far west side of Alaska, right next to Russia, and you can only get there by plane or boat. And we did transfer two people. We had an aquatics director from MIT, and we recruited from the outside and got a recreation director from Arizona State University. But the rest of them were Bethel locals, all the lifeguards, the customer service reps. So, and that's, that one, this time zone's not too bad. I manage Bethel, too. That's a four-hour difference, so I can do that, too. It's not that big a deal.
Bethel was a lot of fun.
But Bethel was a lot of fun, and that was one that we did in about, with about three months' notice. And again, that, for a staff transition, with the cell phone, the communication, the age of the people, it was so diverse. And again, one of the most fun projects, I could talk about it all day, it's really cool. But I like to finish with that, saying, if we could do it there, we could do it anywhere.
One of the things I'll add, and I think I've worked with James on a lot of our transitions, he does great with people and our client liaison groups, but one of the things we were able to do on these two that are actually July 4th, is the transition formal date for Harvard and Cornerstone, is we were able to transition the people that the client wanted us to retain at their existing PTO level, and on day one, they're starting on our benefits, not having to go 30 days on COBRA or whatever. And we're talking 100 and some people. So benefits day one, so on July 4th, they're on our benefits, their PTO is grandfathered over, their salaries, obviously, we worked with the client to look at what their salaries were. It was great, it was right around one of their anniversary periods, so they're getting their 3% merit increase right on the 4th as well. So there's a lot of things we can do from the human capital side and the logistics side of the transition with these people, that it eases a lot of the anxiety for many of our transition clients, because it's the people that they're initially most concerned with and obviously moving forward.
And I would add to what Chip said, if this project went our way, that this team would join our region, so they'd be one of, you know, they would be collaborating on a monthly basis. All the managers get on a call and talk about ideas, we keep them up to date. And that would be MIT, Harvard, Sherwood, Chip's group in Texas, Milwaukee, there's a bunch of them, very diverse group, too. So there's a way to do it in Sherwood, there's a way the student population's doing at the hospital, the corporate, there's, it's a nice group. So they would meet on a monthly basis. We have all-hands calls with all the support staff once a month, and then the managers meet at a corporate location. We try to jumble it around Minnesota, Chicago, we've done Dallas, to meet in person with a multiple regions, probably about three regions to share ideas. So it's a great network, it's kind of a pitch that we give more to the staff maybe than to you, but Why Health Fitness is a great place to work, but it's real positive. And of the groups coming over, both in Hartford and at Harvard, it's been a real pickup from both of them coming over, we're getting a real positive response. I mean, they don't have to work for us, the Harvard group can say, ah, it's not for me and leave. We have not lost, not one, we got everyone.
So.
Sorry, Eric.
Value-added programs and services, that's what this binder is. So I talked about it a couple minutes ago, but, you know, this slide, ounces make pounds, it's not one thing, it's the sum total of a lot of the things we can bring from the staffing side and making them feel whole, they make that transition feel good about the transition, to the program resources we can bring. And one of the things we want to make sure you understand as you walk away from tonight is, it's not our approach to come in and try and just fix something or change something for change's sake. There's a lot of our transitions, like with Harvard, we're changing very minimal to the day-to-day operations of the program. They simply wanted to make a change with their management partner and transition their people to a new partner. So we're not coming in and making the whole house change because they don't need that. What you need is what we'll bring to the table. But we feel, on the other side of that, it's also going to be part of our part as your partner to show you our resources. And you can see that on the next slide, and this is just a summary, but in this binder here, you'll see the sample program calendar, and some of these things you see listed there, like our Mind Your Health seminar series, our multi-session classes, our What's What Meetup. And you can see, they got catchy phrases, but a lot of them are what we learned through listening to our clients. Hey, someone can't come and do a 45-minute or a 60-minute class. The What's What Meetups are 10- to 15-minute, really quick blast-type meetings. And we can do it out in the field, we can do it up in a conference room, we can do it in a group classroom. So a lot of these things that we're developing, and we have a development team that sits at our corporate office and just listens to all of our clients and creates these programs. And then, like I said earlier, we put them all in packages. So the staff, what we always try to do is limit the indirect time the staff is spending and really focus on their direct member service out on the floor. So we don't want them in an office somewhere trying to create the next Lunch and Learn or Mind Your Health seminar series. It's all right there, and they can create that. That's what James will do, will work on program calendars. But again, all of these resources are in our management fee, and you have access to those.
And some of the things you don't see on this slide would be some of the value-added programming that our managers actually just come up with themselves. When it comes to quarterly calls or quarterly meetings, like, one of the items that comes as Boga fit, if you've ever seen that or heard about it, it's, we're doing it now, either Tribe Fit or Tribe Core, even some of the personal training programs that we do, just not basic personal training, but some of the ideas that come out of those meetings and some of the things that these managers are doing are just, they're phenomenal for their clients and for their groups.
And I think, just to kind of add to James and Arch's point, you know, we read through the comments from the community members, and we saw there's a lot of stuff that they love, right? I mean, the senior programming, the yoga classes, the dance classes, all these things are great, and they're things that we'd want to keep going. I mean, if they're successful, let's keep going with those, but then let's also add some other pieces to it, some more diverse programming, and keep pushing that forward. So I think it's a combination of both. It's continuing what's working and then also adding in some things that maybe aren't there now.
I'm going to fast-forward us, because I know we're just about at that 30-minute mark. This slide here, it's illustrative, obviously, it's talking, again, more about our supportive partnership. You can see the little bubbles, I guess, in the funnel there. But your liaison group, obviously, your advisory board, obviously sits at the top there. You have our onsite professional staff, obviously. Then you have our strategy and engagement team, and then our account management team for corporate support. So that strategy and engagement team that we have, their sole job is to look almost from an outsider's perspective and say, what's going great, what can we do better? And that team will collaborate with our account managers like James and the liaison groups to applaud what's working well, but look at what we can do moving forward for the next year to get you to that higher plateau. So this just gives you an illustration, the one team, one plan, one message, we're really here to be your partner.
And I think it's worth noting, too, when we talk about advisory board, this is a board that we want a diverse group of people in. So obviously, members of the city, we want some community members as well, Health Fitness would sit on it, but it's going to be a diverse group that can help really make decisions as to, you know, what we're doing next within the facility. This wouldn't be a Health Fitness decision, this would be a decision that's made by the community and by the city of Sherwood.
Business intelligence is a fancy word, in my opinion, for our management system. So what are we doing behind the scenes, what are the members using directly from a technology or perspective? So the way we like to approach with a transition project is, we don't want to assume anything. We put a line item in here for what we feel would be a representable member management system. A lot of people call them different technology solutions. It's the front-end, member-facing things for check-in, enrollment, them seeing group class schedules, being able to sign up for a noontime class in whatever, so it's that. But it's also the back office. It's for us to do point-of-sale, all the management reporting, managing data, and mining the data and things like that. Our approach with transitions is we put a price tag in here, but to be honest with you, in some transitions, like with Cornerstone, the city just invested in RecTrack for all of their parks and recreation. So they said, look, we just made this investment that we didn't know when we were proposing, we're totally fine. So we're dropping that, and we're adopting the use of the RecTrack system. We have other clients where they say, you know what, we think we need a fresh start, so what do you recommend? We have a lot of experience working with different member management systems, so we know what's good about them, we know what they're challenged with, BSD, CSI, mind-body, RecTrack. What we like to do consultatively, if you need a new member management system, we would assume, we would share with you what we've seen work well out there in the industry, what some of our other clients, like Chip, you use.
CSI.
CSI. He's been using it for.
21 years.
21 years. So he knows it inside and out. MIT uses a different thing, or Bethel uses something different. So we have some variety there. So we'd work with you to come up with what that solution is within that price range, and we march forward using that.
And so, to wrap up, we did include some sort of high-level pricing, I imagine, within the Q&amp;A section, we'll get into this in more depth, but at a high level, you can sort of see the breakout here. The idea is to be very transparent, salaries and wages, benefits, liability and member management system like he just talked about. And then really, you know, our interest in the business is the fixed management fee. We can talk more about that as we go into the question and answer. And then the last item is the variable facility and program expenses. And you can just see here, and we'll get into this later, but sort of a breakdown of that. So to wrap up, you know, we read through the RFP, we visited your facility, and we left excited. I know, you know, when we got in the car, we were like, wow, this is a really great opportunity, it's right in our wheelhouse, it's something we breathe and live every day, and we would love the opportunity to partner with you. We think we'd be a great, long-term, strategic, and transparent partner. So with that, we can turn it over to question and answer.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn it to counsel, yes.
I just have one quick question to start with. You said you toured, did you do that before you put in the RFP or after?
It was like the day before, yeah.
Yeah, the day before, yeah.
I had read something.
Sometime right before.
It was pretty.
A week before, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Pepper. Thank you for the great presentation and for being so well-prepared for the presentation. This is good stuff, so very much appreciated. Just, I'll start it off, one quick question. You said you had four transitions that you've managed. Would you mind telling us who the previous operators were, or any transitions with each of those?
Yeah, we go to them, and James lived and breathed them. This half of them, so.
And living and breathing, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah. Yeah, so yeah, like Cornerstone.
Cornerstone was Aquatics for Life. Bethel, Alaska was United Pools. Harvard was TSI.
Which is Townsport International.
And the old former Corporate Fitness Works.
Former Corporate, yeah.
Who was number four?
And Emory was, it's an Atlanta-based, it's a university-based. You've probably heard of Emory University.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that Emory?
That's Emory. And that was a local group. I apologize, I didn't remember the name.
But it was a local, Atlanta-based. We had an interesting one. It's not one of your four, but with Harley-Davidson, we, we transitioned, they had four locations and they had three different vendors. That was pretty wild. Yeah, so that was Medifit.
Plus one.
Plus, um, yeah, I'm trying to remember. That was, that was three years ago. How do I forget? But yeah, that was, that was kind of wild because when you're trying to match, like Art was saying, match salaries and benefits, they're coming from all different places. So that was, I thought, worth mentioning, interesting.
Why didn't you mention Cornerstone? What was that?
Cornerstone is the city of, of West Hartford. And that's currently Aquatics for Life. AFL.
West Hartford, Connecticut, it's community-based. They're, they anchor very heavily, obviously, in the aquatics, but they do have an equipment space, group classroom. But we're hoping to come in and maybe more balance out more of the message they're sending to the community, not just the wet programming, but also promote dry programming and outreach as well, so.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
First of all, let me just say, someone who was, someone who was born and raised in St. Louis Park, Minnesota, welcome to, uh, welcome to Sherwood. It's not going to influence my decision. I'm just, just throw that out there. It's good to have some Minnesota in the, in the house.
That's why we brought a diverse group.
Right. That's right, yeah.
So I can say Skoll and you'd know what I'm.
Absolutely, yeah. Born and raised, Duluth for college. So, um, so, you know, it certainly sounds like there's some growth within your company and a lot of transition is really a big part of your, you know, your, your, your operating model. You're here today, obviously, because you're looking to grow and come into Sherwood. Do you have, can you share with us what more plans you have for growth in other facilities? I mean, how much bigger are you planning on getting? And where do we fit into that? I mean, I know that you've got a hundred and five clients, two hundred and thirty centers. Do you foresee a cap to that? How much bigger are you getting?
I'll try and answer your question first. Again, before I joined Health Fitness, I was a consultant in the industry. And one of my first jobs was to be a consultant to UAW Ford. And they went out and created monies for, through their union and the company, and they built fifty-four fitness centers. I was a consultant and sat in fifty-four different sales presentations for management. So the thing that I saw, and I'm taking my Health Fitness hat off, one of the best things I thought that Health Fitness did then, and I know they do now, obviously, is that we scale our behind-the-scenes account management. So we're not going to overgrow our ability to have James be here when you need him, to have those weekly calls with his team members. So our plan to growth, we're not the best fit for every opportunity. We'll be the first to say that. We like to look at clients that have a true value, have a true mission, really want to take the program somewhere. I'll give you an example. We get a lot of RFPs that come our way from like property management groups, where they're looking at the fitness center as like a building amenity, just like the cafeteria and things. And there, there's no real program attached to the physical space. We get a lot of those RFPs and it really doesn't fit our mission because they're really just custodial with the physical space. So to answer your question, we're looking to grow and find new partners, new client partners that have similar objectives to us, where they actually want to see an APR grow from three to five visits to six to nine to eight to twelve. Because we know if we're getting people in more, then we're doing good things for the individual. Usually people that come in more, it's good for the organization or the community or the city as well.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
As a follow-up to that, do you have a goal for the number of new partnerships in the future that you're striving for?
If you look at our, since, I'd say two thousand and ten, we've probably grown somewhere between six to eight new accounts a year. But again, that could be a two FTE fitness program at a corporate campus, or it could be a cornerstone. So I'd say six to eight is probably the average growth, but again, it's pretty dispersed across the US. And when you look at our account management team, I don't want to say the number, you probably know it better than me, but how many more Jameses are there between your?
Probably eight to ten of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually it's a three-hour drive, a two-hour plane ride to most of the clients. Bethel's an exception, obviously, but.
I'm an exception, yeah. My region, right. I would think too that, that we're, we're seeing a, we're seeing increased opportunity and I think we're seeing a real match with what we can offer. Talk more about the same, we hope you feel the same way, in this large fitness space arena. And, and we're putting more concentration because just recent success with Harvard and Cornerstone and Alaska right off the, and it's part of our management fee approach. Tony touched on the fixed fee. Competitive landscape may be a little different in that industry than it is in the corporate sector or in the university sector. We're finding it to be a pretty, a pretty good match. So if we continue to have success and our clients continue to feel we're successful, I would answer your question, we want to grow. To Art's point, we want to scale that growth to make sure that we can be as successful with everyone we bring on and not water down. And so far, I think we're, we're, we're in an area where we can do that quite successfully.
You named a lot of facilities that are operated by different entities. Do you have city-owned entities that you have transitioned?
We have a couple.
And where are those?
We have one, well, Bethel, Alaska, obviously. Crosby, Minnesota. We have the ci, the town of West Hartford. Am I missing? We, we do some health and wellness in a little different arena with like, I mean, just state of Nebraska. Tony helped me with some of those.
I think, I think that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Yes, go ahead.
So City of Sherwood, Sherwood, Oregon, is consistently ranked very high on national lists for livability and for a sense of community. And I hear a lot of great things about fitness, but there's a very strong sense of community in our town and in the existing facility that we have now that's operated by the YMCA. You've talked a lot about staff transitioning, but I'd love to hear a little bit more about how you guys envelop community and transition that community and present that kind of, I guess, the transition of community that we, we want.
That's a great question because in a lot of our centers, we get heavily involved in each community, whether we're hosting a circus or we're hosting a dinner or a gala or an event or golf tournament. One of our, and I'll just share, we, one of, two of our brightest programs are, we get involved in community, shields and axes. We have a huge day for the firemen and the police force. They compete against each other and, and they, they call it battle. But it's, it's a fitness competition to where we raise money through a foundation and we donate that money back to the winning team. So they take that money back to their firehouse. They take this, I'm not kidding, it's like a six-foot trophy. I'm six-eight, so it, it's up there. And we put the, the winning team on it and they take it back to the police station or the firehouse. And again, it's in the community. So let's just take a town and the surrounding area, you know, it might be two hundred to three hundred thousand people. So we'll have twenty to thirty teams, they'll compete all day. They'll, you know, they'll get out their aggression. And then at the end of the day, we, we have this big plastic check, we sign it and we, we give it to them and it's papers, it's all covered. That's one way we get heavily involved and they, and, and the community loves it. They come out in droves. Or we're hosting galas or we're hosting golf tournaments. And we're raising money for the community because when we raise that money, it stays in the community, it doesn't go anywhere. I'll give you an example. We did, we have a foundation we work with, one of our sites, and we decided to have a flash membership drive. Two weeks, we signed up four hundred and fifty-eight new members. And it was a very easy marketing campaign done through social media. And we took all the money in enrollment and we donated back to the foundation. And we ended up buying a infant preemie stretcher. So the premies through the Children's Miracle Network could be transported from hospital to hospital in a safe manner. So those are just some of the things we do that gets our community involved and gets them excited about what it is we do. And we could go on and on, but hopefully that answers your question.
It does for, for like outside the actual facility, but what about community program inside the facility? Things that would foster and that sense of community that's already there.
Well, if we're doing Mind Your Health seminars for the community, we'll do that. We actually take Mind Your Health seminars, we put them out through the hospital. And that is involved through the communities because that will go out to the community. And again, that's just one of the hospital-based systems. Mind Your Health is a big thing for us and basically it's just a, a well-being on how to eat properly, how to work out properly, how to work out where you can do ten thousand steps a day. So we're, we're involved with community in that way. Be programmed within, in the, the centers. And what we try to do is when we drive membership, we try to drive those individuals to be active within our, in our sites. And that's where we get the community involved. Wanting them to work out, they're wanting to be part of the programs or want, because what happens is, is when mom drops, or mom or dad drop the, the child off for swim lessons, they're involved in our facilities. They're either eating in the cafe, they're going up to workout, they're going to one of our spas and getting massage, which that happens a lot.
Which we don't have.
We can make that happen. And we, and we did, we, one of the hospitals came to us, hey, you want the service line for a spa? I said, we'd love it. Transitioned it and it's by far one of the best kept secrets in Beaumont, Texas.
Chip, could you add a little bit? I want to try, I think I'm hearing what you're saying with maybe your senior programming, your youth programming.
We'll do a lot, we'll do a lot of seniors and youth program.
Trying to get to know you and then.
And, and we have a huge senior population that will do aquaside. You can call it whatever you want. It's basically water aerobics. We have a, a large youth population in summer camps, in swim lessons, in youth activities and youth camps. And then we also have youth memberships throughout some of our centers, where mom or dad can drop their, their child off and they're participating in actual programs in our center, not just running around going to the pool. They're coming to an activity class, they're going to a swim club, they're going to a tennis club, they're going to an outdoor club, they're going to a, a arts and crafts club. So they're moving throughout our center at different times, but they're not just running around and, and just doing nothing. They're actually actively engaged.
We also do fun stuff, too.
Yes.
Like, there's one campus where it's got beautiful greens. So we have the, the youth Easter egg hunt at the center every year. In Wisconsin, Green Bay, believe it or not, we do a road trip, you know, within, community members come in, they go to, to a, a big football game. So we have fishing tournaments. So there's, but really it, it's on the geography of the location. There's football games, fishing trips, Easter egg hunts, but we have to understand how integrated and how far the center reaches out into the community and brings people in. And it also goes out into the community as well. It really varies from client to client, but there's fitness, wellness, recreational things, right? But we also try and find out what, what things can we also do to maybe help the community? Like that Easter egg hunt was a great example of how they had a need. And, and our staff are the ones that go out and hide all the eggs and everything like that. So there's a lot of those type of things that go on. One of our campuses, they host a big summer, end of summer picnic party that all the community comes to. So there's a lot of that that goes on. It's just, we don't know what, what you do right now and what rate you want to do it moving forward.
We have a lot of community activities sometimes. And the Easter egg hunt has already been spoken for.
What about pancakes or Santa?
Yeah.
That would be perfect.
And we can, I, I love, again, you can tell, I, I like talking about Bethel and I hope to talk about Sherwood with another client about this one day, tell the examples we did there. But we would do really out-of-the-box thinking. Like, like our center, our aquatic center was one of the only places in town that had internet access. So it's a way to get people to come in, free internet, but then you have a captive audience for health and swimming and safety and all of those things as well. So you, you could take kind of out-of-the-box things to, to capture. The, the goal is to make people healthier, to keep them active. And we learned at Bethel, hey, we have something here. We have internet in here that we can, we can market. We also used guitar lessons of all things. That sounds kind of odd for Health Fitness, right? But it got people to come in the door and see the center and participate in other activities as well. So I think the boundaries are kind of limitless when we learn about your culture and what, what people want to do. And, and then we'll have the community coming to us and, and come up with ideas like spa, hey, you think you could do this? And we don't initially say no to it. We consider anything and everything if it makes sense and it fits in the program.
And I think, just on a quick sort of somewhat related note, our conversations internally after our tour was, was, you have a lot of great outdoor space that, I know Chip, you've done a lot of outdoor activities. So, you know, your eyes are sort of lighting up in terms of all the great things we think that we could bring in terms of utilizing all that space outside of the facility to do various events and classes and recreation leagues, et cetera. So just kind of another piece to that.
I have a couple of questions around programming. One of them that you brought to the surface for me is there is consideration of a skate park going in, some of that free space. How do you guys feel about a skate park? Is that something you would be willing, interested in sort of having part of your management or would you prefer that to not be?
Never say no to anything. We work alongside skate parks. I can't find it, Bethel, there you go, the last place you think to see a skate park. We do, right there.
They use it four weeks out of the year.
No kidding, yeah.
But yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea that you bring to us, that we can go out and research and some, you know, there may be one that I'm not captioning right now and say, oh yeah, so-and-so at, at wherever has a skate park and, and we should look at that. So, but, but yeah, I think.
It's not out of the question.
Not out of the question. It would fit, that, that type, it's physical activity, it's recreation.
Like rock climbing.
Right.
There's all kinds of you go.
So when you go out and do all of that, are you representing the client as like, as the city for Bethel? Are you representing Bethel when you're out and about? Howard, you, you talked a little bit about branding. Are you, you say you're behind the scenes, so you're going out there doing all these community activities or whatever. How are you representing yourself?
We represent ourselves as the brand of the, of the program or of the facility. So we wouldn't be Health Fitness or we wouldn't be the city of Sherwood, but we might be the Sherwood Activity Center. Or whatever the brand is for the program.
Sherwood Recreation Center or whatever.
Our marketing department will help you develop and we would represent that way as well, as a joint partner, as your management company.
So I.
After so integrated with the clients, I just think they're employed by the client.
I had a couple more programming. There's also a teen center there. I'm wondering how robust your teen center programming is? If that's something you have at other places or if it's been more focused on adults to senior age?
Other than Harvard and MIT being a colossal teen center?
Yeah, but they're adults. I, I guess I, I'm. They are technically usually adults, but I'm talking thirteen, fourteen.
And that's a, we, we transitioned where we did something like that at Chris's. That was a challenge five and a half years ago. They want to change. They want to get younger. And that's when we started our teen membership, our youth membership. And that's what led into getting licensed by the state to start doing summer day camps, to start doing the youth activity classes. And when I say youth, that's a teen. And then even taking what we did in, in the state of Texas is if we follow the UIL rule, if they're in the seventh grade, they have access to our centers. And they have access to those classes with parent supervision. So it's, they're getting integrated and, and they're getting active in our center as a member, but also as a team. But then we also do special activities for them, whether it's a, a pool party or a movie night pool party, things like that.
Teen dance.
Teen well.
You have a good amount of space dedicated to that.
We did it once and maybe it worked out too well. It turned more into dodgeball and.
Love it.
Probably hurt each other, but.
As a parent, I prefer dodgeball over dancing, so it's okay. Same. And then my last two programmings with specific groups is, how do you meet the needs of your handicap clients?
We have actually a lot that come into the, the Wallace Center in Beaumont. I've, I've got some of the most amazing front desk associates at that, at that site. That helps my, lets my, or makes my job a lot easier. We've got wheelchair access. And we've got three people that come in on a daily routine and the wheelchairs are there before they get in the door. Um, one's got MS and he walks in, he, with his crutches, he sits down, we wheel him back to the pool. One's got MS and he walks in, he, with his crutches, he sits down, we wheel him back to the pool. Great thing for our pool, it's got a handicap ramp. And we have a lot of people that take part in those exercise programs in the water. And we also have many different lines of equipment. You know, it depends on the center. We have a Kaiser line at the Wellness Center and that's one that really works out well for those individuals because it's just air compressing, it's just push button. And then we also have staff that's always available on the floor to help these individuals. Whether it's a sci-fit bike to where we're having to move something or get them into a new fit or a Concept 2 rower or into the Kaiser equipment, they're always there to help.
And do you lease or do you purchase your fitness equipment?
Depends on the client. If the client wants to own it outright, we'll purchase it. If they want to lease it to a line item of the budget, we can definitely do that. We do fair market value leases, we do dollar buyout leases. You know, in my world, I love to turn equipment over every 36 months because treadmills usually have 100,000 miles on them after three years and the warranty goes out in three years and you're stuck with a dinosaur and it's going to start to break down. Equipment, strength equipment can last a lot longer, five years, but again, it's all depends on the farmer.
And my last question is, do you participate or have familiarity with the Silver Sneakers and the silver? And so you guys would accept that also would be something that would continue?
What we'd like to do though, and this is, I always like to say as a consultant, we'd really love to show you all of our programming too, because I think we have a lot of programming that could complement Silver Sneakers. And it can be a little bit, oh, you know, this is a little, I think the outcome might be very similar. We're getting them to move, right? But I think what we found is to get people staying and get them active continuously. Because a lot of times you'll see a report where it says, well, we had 60% of the membership active. But they don't tell you that they count active as once a month, you know? So I think we have some ideas of how we can complement existing things. Not to say this is better than that, but sometimes they just want something different every eight weeks.
I'm done for now.
That's Robinson.
Yes. I have a couple of questions. One, how did you learn about our RFP?
Our MIT Executive Director, I think, phoned out on the web and brought it to our business development team, Tim Mertz, who's anxiously awaiting a phone call after this.
He's very involved in the community rec, he's a board member on NERSA. And he has just a network out there and he looks for opportunities for us, to be honest with you. He just found one in Mississippi that we would have never stumbled across unless he found it, so.
Interesting. I want to transition to transitioning. How quickly would you start? If you were awarded the operating contract and we reached an agreement, how quickly would you start analyzing? I guess your first thing is orientation to Sherwood and needs analysis are two of the things you mentioned, like at page 32.
I would answer the question, the quickest I've ever done one was 30 days. We did a large 10,000 eligible site for Genentech in South San Francisco. And we had 30 days notice. It was going to be longer and they wanted to make the decision quicker and that was the fastest. And I would not recommend that's the way we do it. Went fine, they're still a client today and I'll give you Suzanne Rollers' numbers as a reference, it's fine with me. But I would say typically 180 days is more normal. And I think this one, if I heard right, was more like a year if it was. The more, you can hear our theme, right? The more we get to know you, the better off we'll do. So in a 30-day, we're going to get to know you on the fly, you know? And if we had more time to spend with you, I think we could make more meaningful program plans, program calendars, budgets, those types of things. So I would say a typical client, would you agree, 180 days?
We've done some in six months, like James said, the other side is that. But to give you two breathing examples that I think their projects again are so similar to yours is the West Hartford, the city municipality client and Harvard. We received the bids in December, we responded in January, we presented in the February timeframe, we're awarded. And we're transitioning both of them the first week in July. And both of them have 100 to 120 plus headcount. All the same similar facilities, aquatics and gymnasiums and workout rooms that you have. So they're very similar. So that's, you know, like James said, 180 days or so. What's nice about our transition success is we're kind of the tip of the iceberg. There's a whole team that would go underneath us, our legal working on agreements, our HR team working with James, Kelly, looking at understanding all the staff, what's their current pay scale, what's their PTO level, all those type of things. When's their anniversary date where they need a merit increase? There's a handful of people that work with us as a team. We also have a weekly person, Nika, that basically manages, all she does is she'll manage your transition plan. And she does a great job. She schedules our weekly meetings, she keeps us on task as a team to make sure we're marching to those dates that we mutually set up and we're successful with that.
So if we have a year from October, is that, how would you address it? If typically it's six months and you have a year, do you wait six months before you do your analysis or?
No, I'm an anxious one, so I say why wait? You know, I'd like to get started because then it's a luxury, it's a rarity that we don't usually have, to be honest with you. But can we take the next year and look at getting a better understanding of the community? What's your objectives want to be moving forward? That's also for the physical space, any renovations, equipment, things like that. And then also work with you on the human capital side of the equation, existing staff. Do you want to keep them? Do you want to retain them? Do we go out to market with positions? What time do we do that? So we can certainly make that 12 months productive. We'd have a little bit more breathing room, obviously, between our biomarkers, but we could do it.
There's a lot of different moving parts and this is what I do day-to-day, the transitions and such. So there, legal can be something that could really hold you.
Way to go, Josh.
Honestly, even the transition itself from, I gave you three groups, right? They were all different, their acceptance level to don't let them on the premises yet until X, Y. You know, there's a lot of rules that you have to follow. And we, we're, you know, ethics, we're not going to sacrifice anything, we're going to do it the right way every time. So it's us together deciding what's the right way. You know, how do you want to do it? The time, like Arts of the Year to me is a luxury, it's not too much time, it's just more good to know you. We could probably be more productive, but what can we do, what can't we do in the year? How frequently can both sides meet? And I'm willing to do that. But there's a lot of, if I gave you six examples, it'd be six different ways with all kind of different moving parts on how they went. I'd love to share that with you.
And simple, we'd work with you on a program calendar, we'd share with you our marketing resources. Ask you, where do you want to take the program from here, from Silver Sneakers to community events? And we can work on a 2018 October program launch. Maybe we start 90 days before that, doing some different marketing things to start getting rooted. So when we hit October, we're hitting it at sprint speed.
That would be one of the first things Nika, our implementation manager, would do. Hey, James, what's the date? And she marks a date and then we work backwards on the calendar, right? And then she'll put, she maps that out. We love Nika, she's running Harvard and West Hartford right now. And without her, they would both be really difficult. To do two at the same time, to go at the same day with about the same amount of time and they're both going very well. And be happy, you know, once we get them started, I'll give you those people too as a reference, no problem.
Do you have experience in the transition of former operators or current operators? You know, before you come in, have you had experience with uncooperative employees and management saying, no, you can't look at our books, blah, blah, blah?
I would say most are cooperative, but we have experience that are not cooperative. One of each right now.
And one small question left. What is the size of the transition centers that you have, our three? You indicated that the Alaska one was 6,400, but there was no reference to the population that was being served in the other two.
The population of Alaska, is that a question?
No, 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 the population of the cities in which the transition centers are located.
It's West Hartford, so you stumped me on the number, but it's the city of West Hartford and it's marketed to the whole community. So we can find that number pretty quick.
Well, I was just wondering how close it was to our population because the Alaska one is not close to our population.
Right. Actually very similar.
Okay.
Google that pretty easy. Okay, yes, Counselor.
Okay, sure. So you talked about new member management system. I don't think we have a management system like that.
They have, the Y has one.
The Y has one, okay. How much does one cost? What's the cost essentially, would you?
We do, we have perfect mine.
Does not live up to its name.
But it's really just for that type of a facility.
Okay. So if we're looking at acquiring one, how much do those systems cost?
My item 27 under account management, it's the member management system, we have a budget annually of 24,000 in there.
Okay, there it is.
And again, look at this budget as not a piece of grain, more of a block of clay. We would work with you on that, we think we could get a good system for that. But sometimes you walk into a client and say, oh, can you add point of sale to that? And can you do file transfers and can you do data analytics? And if you can, then it's kind of adding features onto a car. You want a sunroof and leather seats and all that, then we might be a little bit. But that cost is not a markup cost, that's if we went with a CSI, it's a pass-through expense. So whatever the system is, because like everything, CSI has module options. If you don't need this one, you don't have to pay for it. So we'd work with you to find out the package you need and it might only need 18, but you might want something that's 26,000 instead of 24.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have some questions. When you guys put your proposal together, were you assuming that the facility was already fully equipped? Or does your proposal take into consideration needing to equip it?
We assumed that it's equipped.
It's equipped.
But there's not a center like yours that we don't run that every year. There's some type of, like Chip was saying, an influx of new equipment and out with the old and with the new. Budgeting and this preparing. We developed three- to five-year plans, the financial benefits of lease versus purchase. We have a national purchasing program with all of the key providers. And we'll pass 100% of that discount on to you. I mean, I've seen some as high as 39% discount on equipment pricing. We don't mark it up, we pass it on to you. And we can really work with you on what's the best type of equipment. One thing I saw as I was walking through your center, there's a really new cool concept. And I say new because it's really been around for two years, but I think it's here to stay. You might have heard some of the buzzwords, CrossFit, functional training, TRX, the boot camp, the social environment type class. I think you have a lot of great space where you can put in like a synergy from Life Fitness or a Queen Act unit from Precor and things like that, where we can do a lot more of the social CrossFit type of programming in your center. It was born first with, have you guys heard of TRX bands? Where it's a big metal piece on the wall and you do a lot of body resistance handwork. This takes it five steps higher. We've seen about six or eight clients now invest in that type of equipment and it took a huge spike in the social aspect of their group activity programming. And those are the type of things we can help you with, equipment-wise. But I guess to answer your question, I went off on a tangent. We assume that you either have a budget that you use every year to replace and replenish certain equipment.
Okay. I think it's also just worth noting that we help design facilities. So a lot of our clients, we actually come in with a clean slate and Arch is actually the main consultant there who comes in and looks at a space and says, here's the equipment you should buy and kind of help build that facility from scratch.
We run two centers for Honda in Ohio, but they're 42,000 square foot centers. They have a ton of equipment, so for the last five years or so, they were run internally for 40 years. And we went in, they did a real shot of B12 in the arm on the equipment side. And it's been such a tremendous spike to their participation. But we'll go in, as long as they have CAD files, we'll go in and we'll help them. We have all the CAD blocks, we have CAD capability. And we can help you with equipment design, equipment layouts, 3D renderings, things like that. That all comes within our management fee as well.
And then on the financial side with your management fee, first of all, how is that figured? Is it a certain percentage of revenues? And then second of all, working as a partnership, I see the estimated five-year projections would be a loss each year. And I would assume that this, you would be assuming the city would be subsidizing that or that would be a hit to the city?
Yes, that's, when we're looking at the financials, yes, you're right. We do show a steady increase in the recovery rate though. And again, we like to look at this as the first draft. We don't know truly what your current revenue is, what your expense is. But if you looked at our national average of clients like you and similar to you, our recovery rate's about 112%.
I noticed those, the three examples you gave us all had a positive recovery.
So we feel we can do better, but there's a lot we still need to know to understand. If you're currently at a better recovery rate, then we're certainly not going to take you the wrong way. I mean, take you the right way. But again, this was based a lot on what we tried to absorb about your program through that, the feasibility study and the RFP. We put together something that we thought showed a steady growth of recovery in the investment.
Recovery rate at the hospital was 92% five and a half years ago.
It's about five years. And then how is your management fee determined? Is it a percentage of something or is it?
We look at, we look at the size of the program, the FTE count. And we come up with a cost for the FTE equivalency to come up with that. Can we compare it to, again, our light clients? What are we getting in management fee for current operations that are similar to yours? Cross those.
Counselor President?
So on one of your slides, you said that that management fee is basically what you get out of it? Like why are you here in Sherwood? Which makes sense to me and now we understand where the deficit would come from if there is one. And then what about the profits beyond the management fee and the?
Back to the program, to the city. So that's what I was telling you, I think has been our success recently. Probably every day, but we're not looking to profit from the members, from the residents. We'll get paid what we put in the budget. But if we are more successful and if that 95 goes to 120, Chip's program, maybe it's more. That's where that would go.
It would be reinvested into our facility in the way that the city dictates or the way that you dictate?
Yeah, literally whatever, yeah.
We wouldn't dictate because in our mind, it's not our money, right?
So the money would just be turned back over to us for us to decide what to do with it?
Need to decide that together.
We'd be your partner and we'd help you consultatively. I mean, we're there every day, we might have suggestions that, hey, we think this needs a renovation, this needs to be codeined. Treadmills, whatever it may be, we'd give you recommendations on how to make some investment back into the program to get greater return. But ultimately, our management fee is our only interest in the partnership as far as profit goes. Any excess revenue that's created, it's your revenue because it's your center and your program, your city, your community. And we'll be your good partner to help you, you know, if you're asking us, how do we reinvest that into the center or a portion of it, then we certainly can help do that.
That might go to the revenue or the advisory board, for instance.
I think, you know, some of the concern I saw from the community when I was reading through some of those comments was just that, that we would be sort of pushing to drive more profit, we wouldn't be community-centered. But I think this addresses that because really, we're not here to just make money off of the members. We're here, we collect our management fee and anything beyond that goes back to the city. So I think it kind of dispels maybe a rumor that that's what we, you know, that would be our motive.
For profit, trying to make as much as you can. Because there's actually no financial benefit for you.
Beyond the management fee.
Beyond the management fee, would you get, no matter what, to increase revenue? And it's in your best interest to watch the expenses and try to get as much revenue out? I mean, it doesn't benefit you, but for us?
We don't re-sign if you stay at that management fee.
We have the option to say, this is not working.
Some of our clients love the fact that if we generate that revenue. Some of our clients love the fact that if we generate that revenue, they'll come in and say, well, you know, Chip or Tim or whoever, you know, let's let's take funds and let's focus on the building this year. Okay, let's focus on the building. What we'll do is we'll gather those those bids or those those contractors, and we'll present them to the client and say, okay, this is this is for this, this, and this. These are what we have on the docket for this year on the building. Next year might be something totally different. They want to replace equipment. And we'll turn around and we'll in the budget, we'll put it in there, you know, for the funds that we generated for the year before. If that's, you know, or sometimes a client just doesn't even do that. They just say, here's your budget, move forward. We try to operate within that budget to make sure we're hitting those those key points, to make sure renovating the center, we're getting the new equipment, we're expanding. You know, Arch just said something about the group training. We went to the client, said, listen, it's going to cost twenty thousand dollars to do this one little area. And now he's wanting me to grow more group training, so now we're having a whole another group training going on in the gym. So they're so excited about what we're doing that that it's just there. I mean, the money is there, the people are excited and they're happy and they love what we're doing. Maybe it's members, so.
I have one last question about staff. It says, your benefit plan, so your staff, you offer benefits for them? Because they're part of the national group. So if somebody here in Sherwood, you know, it's works at your center, graduates high school, and wants to move to Minneapolis, are you guys, do you do that? Promote from within and?
I mean, I'm an example. I've lived, I worked out of our Connecticut office, Minneapolis twice, San Francisco. And they weren't all professional reasons. I moved for family and got married and, you know, so I was able to stay. We have a lot of stories similar to mine. I know one.
I'm one. Moved around, you know, work whether it's through Blue Cross Blue Shield, whether it's through some of our other accounts in North Texas, South Texas. I mean, and, you know, I was, and I travel, I did it. Bethel, Alaska, I'll go to Bethel.
And are those a mix of promotions versus business need?
Personal, professional, we have a career path.
Okay, that's kind of what I've been wondering about.
Training and education program that's great. We have a great career development individual that works for us. She's worked for us forever. And it's really looking at it as a career instead of a job. A lot of us, James, like, you know, Joe Gillis, our guy in Connecticut, he basically started as an intern at G E.
Yeah, he's got me beat by one level. I wasn't an intern, he won't do.
There's a lot of stories like that where, and when you look at our our fitness rec wellness site based, we have about twenty three hundred square part time people. And a lot of them, you know, if you look at our tenure within the fitness industry, it's it's like double what what it is, the average time people stay. When you look at our tenure, it's not only with health fitness, it's with that career path. The average time they spend at the account they start with. Professionalism, then you take the right leapfrogs up up the path.
And how is your benefit package for your employees?
How is it?
I could I could say the the Harvard group is extremely satisfied. I don't think there has been any loss. Things are either kept the same or there's pickups. So short term and long term disability, they didn't have before. They have now, four one K, they have now, medical, dental.
And you offer health insurance and?
I'm an operator. It's fantastic.
Thirty hours a week or more, full time.
Okay.
And great wellness program that we operate, our own wellness.
I'm not as much in the weeds. I manage a lot of our transitions kind of in certain areas, very in the minutia. But some I step back, H R, benefits things as one of them, but I've never seen a negative reaction to someone going from wherever they were.
Counsel, any other questions?
I said I said one question. So you toured our facility. You probably saw in the the study that was done that the center, there's a lot of talk about expansion to the center, the actual facility. Is that something you've dealt with in the past and coming into a a new facility you've transitioned to and then had to deal with some type of actual growth to the building itself?
Yes, we've, oh, gosh. We've probably been involved in over three hundred construction programs. Like Emory, for example. Emory's a two floor facility, but it's a dated center. They have a big open area in the middle of the track, and they have only one little group classroom. So we're talking about let's, and the structure's there, the the grid structure of the building is there to close in that mezzanine double story and put two new classrooms in there. And that's going to be a huge construction project. James can talk to you about Roche, a pharma biotech company in Indianapolis. We built a sixty five hundred square foot center, and the paint wasn't even dry yet, and they blew the doors off of participation. And three years later, which is very rare, we ended up helping them design a fifteen thousand square foot space on the other side of campus to, you know, allow for more people. Genentech out in San Francisco, twenty five thousand square foot center. We just, and it was an almost two year design project, but they now have a four story. It's cool. It's a round building right on the bay, so they got about a two hundred and eighty degree view of the San Francisco Bay. But it's a four story fitness center that we helped them design.
So how is the funding in those allocated? Who pays for that?
They'll either take revenue, right? They'll take positive revenue. They'll get monies from the organizations from that way to pay for.
Whoever owns it. Whoever owns it pays for it. Counsel, did you have another question?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions, counsel?
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for coming such a distance to speak with us tonight. Thank you. I'll close our work session.